Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Village Board Meeting Committee of the Whole Meeting for November 11, 2010. I'd like to begin by asking our clerk to please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Clevenow.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril.
Here.
Attorney Semenek.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Interim Finance Director Mathisen.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Village Planner Malik.
Yes.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Budget Analyst Parker.
Here.
Thank you. Please join us. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item before us this evening are the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held October 28th and Board Meeting held November 1st, 2010. Any corrections to be reported? Hearing none, moving right along. Open forum. I have one request under open forum this evening from Larry Forsberg from the Westmont Chamber. Larry.
Good evening, Mayor Ron and Village Board Members. I'm basically here right now to inform everyone of three very important upcoming events in the community. First of all, this Saturday night, the Westmont Rotary is having a special event over at the Westmont High School. It's called All Creatures Great and Small. It's an evening of cabaret. It's designed for all family members to participate. It starts at 7:00 over at the Westmont High School. And if you'd like additional information on that, simply go to westmontrotaryclub.com and all the details are there in terms of pricing and so forth. So hopefully you can make it out for that event. Secondly, on Friday, November 19th, we have the Westmont Winter Ball over at the Oprah Kill's Marriott Resort. We've got a great turnout already signed up for that event. We're going to have an evening of live entertainment, great food, networking, and some special events that are going to be going on throughout the evening. So hopefully everybody can make it out for that event. For additional information on that, contact westmontchamber.com or the Westmont Chamber office at (630) 960-5553. And last but not least, coming up around the corner is the Westmont Holidays, the 16th Annual Westmont Holidays. And that's going to be a series of events that will be kicking off on November 26th with our Frosty and Friends Parade. That evening, we'll also have Santa's reindeer and elves over on the lawn at Westmont Center. There'll also be roasting chestnuts out there that evening. The parade will start at 6:45. It'll start over at the Westmont Public Library and work its way down Cass to Richmond Street. Looking at the list for signups for the parade, we're going to have a great turnout this year. And it's a chance to see Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, and Frosty the Snowman that evening. We also have the following morning, for those who want to get up and run, we have a 5K walk-in race that starts at 8:00. You can register that morning over at Westmont Center. Throughout the month, we're going to have phone calls from Santa, Santa's mailbox. We're going to have a luncheon with Santa. We're going to have a Polar Express, which is also a very popular thing. I understand most of the tickets are actually already sold out. There's only a few remaining. So if you're interested in taking your family on that particular trip, contact the Westmont Park District immediately. We also have Season Splendor Saturday evenings over at Veterans Memorial Park. And Greg House will have a Christmas concert on December 12th, the Candy Cane Hunt, and a whole series of other activities, including ice rink going on through the month of December. Now, this all starts off with a decorating day on November 21st. There's going to be pancake breakfast starting at 8:00 a.m. over at the Community Center. That goes into the decorating of the trees and also a craft pizzar where people can get a jump on their holiday shopping. So we have a full month of activities planned. And for additional information on that, www.wpd-the number four fun.org is the Westmont Park District website. And all the details, scheduling events are all listed there. So hope to see everybody out during the upcoming events here in Westmont. Thank you.
Larry, you forgot one thing.
What did I forget?
We're supposed to be encouraging everyone to shop Westmont, whether it be for a new Toyota, a new Mercedes, or a new Chevrolet, or Lincoln Mercury, and also to participate and shop at our businesses that we do have here in the village.
Thank you for the reminder. Always remember to shop, dine, and discover Westmont because we've got a lot of great things going on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, reports. Mayor, I have several things. First, I would like to compliment Frank Trout on organizing our Veterans Day Ceremony today at the Veterans Memorial up at Ty Warner Park. I think every year, he does an excellent job of putting this activity, as well as other activities, together for veterans. But I think this year, for those of us that were there, it was very special. One of the main reasons is the weather was wonderful. We've had lots of times when it's been rainy, snowy, windy, you name it. We've been there. But it was a good turnout today, and it was a great honor for the veterans here in our village. So I want to thank him for that. Right after that was over, he told me that two hours later, he was on a plane headed for Florida for a week's vacation. So enjoy yourself, Frank Trout. The next thing I wanted to do is to read a statement from the Village of Westmont regarding a criminal investigation. On Wednesday, November 9th, the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office issued an arrest warrant for our former Finance Director Lisa Van Bogut for 13 alleged criminal acts. While this is a serious and unfortunate situation, we want to assure our citizens that this isolated incident does not reflect the integrity of the Village of Westmont Municipal Government as a whole. Upon learning of this suspicious activity, the village immediately contacted the Westmont Police Department and initiated a formal investigation with the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office. The village took immediate action to secure and protect village funds and hired a private firm to quickly authorize, was authorized to perform a forensic audit, which concluded that there was no evidence to suggest further suspicious activity. The insurance pool with which the village is a member will cover all losses as a result of this incident. Further, the village will seek restitution for all damages in this case. As this is an ongoing criminal case, and therefore it is inappropriate for the Village of Westmont to comment further at this time. We'd like to thank the State's Attorney's Office of DuPage County for their consultation, leadership, and cooperation with this case. Thank you. Moving right along, next, our village clerk, Virginia Nisimski.
I just want to follow through with your comments about the wonderful ceremony today at the park. It was lovely. The mayor spoke. Everybody gave nice speeches. It was just, and it was a beautiful day. I wish everybody could have been out there. And I want to thank all our veterans that have fought for us over the years and are still fighting for us. So I want to thank them on this special day. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, our village attorney, John Semenek.
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Our village manager, Ron Cyril.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I wanted to report to the board, at the last set of meetings, we had visitors here from the Westmont Landlord Association, the president, the vice president, and they had presented a petition regarding our licensing ordinance and asked us to consider some changes to that ordinance. And I wanted to report to the board that we met with Mr. Baum just a couple of days after that particular meeting. And then earlier this week, we met with three of the four officers of the association. And we had a very good dialogue, and we agreed that we're going to continue to talk about the changes that they proposed. We do have a committee meeting scheduled for December 2nd, the Code Enforcement Committee, in which they've been invited, and we're going to have further discussions about that. We didn't make any commitments to make any changes to the ordinance, but we have agreed that we'll continue that dialogue. So I just wanted to report that to the board. Next, I wanted to ask our Public Works Director to come to the podium. We had a Public Works Committee meeting this week in which he reported on the award of a construction bid for the Hidden View Project. And I passed out to each of the board members a set of documents that include the bid tabulation. So Steve, you could...
Yeah. On Tuesday, we opened bids earlier in the morning for the construction project. It's the underground, it's the sewer and water component of the Hidden View Drive Reconstruction Project. And, you know, essentially everything that's underground. There went out the competitive bid. There were 11 bidders. The low bidder was Jay Congdon Sewer of Carroll Stream, and their bid amount was $135,802.2. That's relative to the engineer's estimate of just over $145,000. The recommendation from the engineer, you know, he checked out the bid tabulations because it's unit price-based and, you know, and made sure everything was in order. So it's a recommendation that we move forward with awarding it. I'm asking your permission tonight to award this on Monday night. Edit the agenda for Monday because we've got a three-week gap, you know, till the next meeting, and they're kind of eager to get started. So we can get a lot of these improvements done this winter and be ready on that, you know, so that would help. The bid tab is in there, too, as far as the ASRED bid prices. And it was a very nice, tight bid. Everybody was like within, other than a couple standouts, they were all within like $5,000 of each other. So it's nice to see. So with your permission, I'd like to, we could add that for Monday.
Comments from board members? Thank you. The last item I had, passed out a letter from Community Unit School District 201, from Kevin Carey, the superintendent. We had a conversation about a week or so ago when it was brought to our attention that through the special education programs in the district, there are a lot of students that are brought into the district using cab services that are not necessarily licensed to do business here in the village. You're required by ordinance to have a license in order to pick up. You're not required to have a license to drop off. And for some of these students, these cab services are doing, you know, both directions for them. And there's a number of districts that feed into this program. So what we did was we asked the school to write a letter kind of explaining what this program is, and we agreed that we would bring it to the board's attention, see if we could talk about making an exception for this particular program. And I believe there's a representative here tonight, Linda Clawwitter, if there's any questions from the board members regarding the program.
Linda's hiding back there. She doesn't...
I raised my hand.
Well, just a quick history. We found out a couple of weeks ago, and this has been going on for over 30 years, that taxis pick up the kids, and I'm at the school. And one day, one of our fine officers stopped the taxi and was asking about the license. They didn't know anything about it. And that's how all this came about. But the kids come from all over, because it's a hearing impaired program, and so they're coming from all different districts around the, the Ehrshamberg, Roselle, I mean, they come from all over the place. So that was the reason for the letter and hoping that we can do something to help the district, because it's been going on for a long time, and that there hasn't been any problems. And they do have a, Mrs. Clawwitter has explained to me, they have their own kind, they follow the state rules on taxis. So, I mean, it's not just any taxi they have. There are certain guidelines that they follow when they're getting taxis.
Are they licensed in some other communities? So we know they're reputable cab companies? I'm presuming that they are licensed somewhere.
They have their, I know you and I spoke, Mrs. Clawwitter, they're licensed...
In other towns?
I can't speak for the other towns, and I don't know if Mrs. Clawwitter will be able to tell. But I know you were telling me about the, they have, the state has a guideline, and we follow that guideline. I'll let you come up.
The cab companies that we're using predominantly are companies that we have verified our license to pick up in the Village of Westmont. But we have some circumstances where, as Mr. Forsley has said, children are being, are coming in from districts that are quite a distance from us, and those companies may not have licenses in Westmont.
Oh, I don't mean Westmont. I just meant probably in the towns they're picking their, the kids up, they're probably already licensed there anyway, and that's...
And what we've started to do, when this is brought to our attention, we've tried to begin to establish a list of the cab companies that we use. Because in our office, for example, I'm the Director of Student Services, and there are essentially two cab companies that we use. Those cab companies have fulfilled the state requirements, and they also are licensed in Westmont. But we also know that, as Mr. Forsley said, there are students that come in through our Deaf and Heart of Hearing Program. They're coming from a wider range of communities. And so we have been working with the other departments to establish a list of the cab companies that they're using. For example, the education program is using, one of the two companies we're using, one is predominantly using Universal Taxi and also Alliance. They're also using Cicero Cab and Key Hub. And I was on the phone with them this evening, just verified before I came to the meeting. They indicated that each of those companies is licensed in Westmont. So now we're looking beyond that to see if there are any other cab companies we've done business with, so we can continue in that process. Because as Mr. Carey said in his letter, we'll make every effort to ensure that the companies that we're using aren't failed license in Westmont. And yes, to go back to your initial question, also clearly licensed by the state, cab have fulfilled all the requirements and credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we'll place this on the agenda for more consideration. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Trustee, comments, starting with trustee Seneca.
Thank you. I just wanted to also reiterate everyone's comments about the Veterans Day Ceremony. It was, yeah, it was very well done, very touching, and thank you to all our veterans. On that same note, I wanted to say thank you to Papa Cicero's Restaurant, because for, I don't know how many years now, he's once again served free lunch to all of the veterans. And it was well attended. He has been ill off and on, and he was unable to be there today. But his daughter Laura manages and runs the restaurant, and it was another very successful luncheon for all of our veterans. So thank you to them. And the last thing I wanted to mention is novel experience at Eight and a Half North Cass. It's a new little store right on Cass Avenue. They have used books, many gift items, a great selection of greeting cards. I would just encourage our residents to stop in, take a look. It's a great store. We've all been wanting more retail in our downtown. And we have this wonderful new gem down there. So please stop and just kind of check it out. It's really a nice store. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Trustee Clevenow.
Just a couple items. Besides a beautiful day and the beautiful, I want to thank the leaders of the high schools to save the taps. I just get the chills when they do that. And they were just beautifully done, and their parents and the school should be really proud. I really enjoyed it and the speeches of Senator Dillard and Senator Patty Bellack and Frank Trout, as well as the mayor. The speeches were just beautiful and really a beautiful day. Very few veterans now are making it because of age. Some of them are gone. But the ones that were there, I think it had to be their most beautiful day for, a nice sunny day. Item to remember is Monday is our Public Information Committee meeting. It starts at 6:00 right here in this room, and hopefully they can make it, although I believe there's a conflict going on with my committee meeting unless I change. Also, we mentioned about changing our clocks last week, but we didn't say, "Don't forget to change your smoke alarm batteries." So please, if you changed a clock, please go back and remember to change your smoke alarm batteries and your CO2 batteries. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
The only thing that I have this evening is, at the Public Works Meeting on Tuesday evening, you're going to be receiving a little letter request form in the mail with your water bill, and it has to do with recycling program within the village. As everyone knows right now, you have an 18-gallon tote container that you have for your recycling. A lot of people within the town do a great deal of recycling, so they're using 32-gallon cans or whatever, and they're marking recycle on them. We have approached waste management and come up with a possible solution. Now, one of it is a 96-gallon toter. This is a rather large container for recycling, and they're proposing an every-other-week pickup for a 96-gallon tote. Now, the other question came into play, a 96-gallon tote will not work for people who live and have garbage picked up in the alleys. So we came up with another suggestion to them, which we have given them, is they have a 32-gallon tote, they have a 64-gallon tote, and they have the 96-gallon toter. The 96-gallon toter would work fine for all of the residents who take their recyclables and garbage to the curb. Now, the other thing, so you understand, this is not going to affect your garbage pricing. This is what we're trying to hold the line on as we're going through this. What we're trying to do is make it easier for people to get all their recycled items in one container and go to an every-other-week pickup for the recycling goods. For the people who live with alley access, one of the proposals that was made to them, they're going back and checking to see logistically if a 64-gallon container can be used in the alley. If not, then the suggestion that I put forth to waste management was, if that's the case, then the residents who live on alley access should be entitled to, say, two 32-gallon containers or possibly three. Now, we don't know exactly how they're going to come back with this yet. We're waiting for an answer. The biggest thing that we want everyone to understand, we want to promote more and more recycling within the Village of Westmont. A lot of people do a great job with this within the village. I'm just, I'm amazed at the amount of recycling that I see on a constant weekly basis. So what we're trying to do is get it in such a way that you don't have to have three or four different little containers sitting out and have to haul them out. We can get it done in one large container or possibly smaller containers for those who live in the alley. But you will be receiving a survey with your water bill. Please take a look at it. It's very short, very concise. Please fill it out and get it back to us. We would really appreciate that. We would like your input on this and any thoughts that you may have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Emery.
A couple things tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank all the veterans for their service through the very difficult times for a long time. There's a lot of veterans in my family, and I thank God all the time that they all came home. As Pat said, 6:00 p.m. Monday is our public safety meeting. And for those of you who aren't familiar with public safety, that's police and fire. And we're going to be discussing some things that will be of interest to our residents. One is, we're looking at squad cars, because the ones that you see all the time driving around in Westmont, the Ford interceptors are not going to be made anymore. So we're going to be talking about what we're going to do as far as what Westmont's squad cars are going to look like in the future. And also, the fire department's going to talk about some things, including equipment they've obtained through grants. And near and dear to my heart is, one of the things that they got through the grant is the animal masks. And so it's, since that meeting is not televised, possibly in the near future, so that the people at home can see that the ambulances will be equipped with animal masks, two members of our voluntary canine unit, First Lieutenant Finn Emery and Sergeant Sylvia Emery, will be happy to come in and demonstrate them for the people at home. So be sure and come in on that. And also, we're very, very excited, on Monday night, we're going to swear in our new Deputy Chief, Ross Brenza. So those of you that don't know Ross, please come over on Monday before our meeting at 7:30 and wish him well and congratulations. So thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Just to thank the veterans, this is the first time we didn't have school off. We had, we had school today. Maybe that's why the weather was better, because I wasn't there. Because every time I've been there, it's been cold. But it was nice to be able to talk about Veterans Day with the students, so, but it was unfortunate that I couldn't be there. But again, to thank the veterans, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Moving right along. First item, development permit request, 15 South Cass. Board to consider a development permit request from Mr. Jerry Navarro for a family restaurant
Hi, good evening. My name's Jerry Navarro. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm here tonight in regards to development permit request at 15 South Cass for a sit-down restaurant, carry-out and delivery catering as well. Little bit about my background, I've been in the restaurant industry for 30 years. I really think that Westmont is a great little town here, and I think that I could bring a spark to the downtown area. And I'm asking, take a look at... Oops, I thought I had it here. I did have a drawing here of the interior. We're going to basically keep the inside as is. I spoke to Fred Kimball earlier this week. I had a couple of questions in regards to signage and some nuances. I think that would liven up that building a little bit, and I'm wondering if it spoke in regards to outdoor seating, if there would be a possibility someday during, come springtime, if there'd be seating available outside in the parking lot. I noticed a lot of the restaurants down in the downtown area have tents, and they have outdoor seating, which is nice, I'm sure, during the car shows and nice summer nights. It would be very helpful to us. But getting back to my background in culinary, started in the late '70s at our family restaurant, Pasta Vinos in Schiller Park. From there, we developed a hotel banquet hall and two other restaurants. Currently, all four of my siblings are in the restaurant industry as well. And I'm here tonight asking for you to take a look at my idea, and I think the, I think we need to market more of the commuters. I see commuters walking past every day. It's a great location. Think fast pace with a, a fast food during the afternoon and a little more fine dining at night, as well as our catering and delivery. Thank you.
Could you tell us what type of food you're going to have on your menu?
Okay. We have, well, it's going to be gourmet Italian. We're going to do fast food during the day, sandwiches, as well as some pastas and salads. And being that the space is so small, the menu will, the sit-down menu will be a little bit smaller than our carry-out, as well as our catering menu.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members?
Yes. Hello, Mr. Navarro. I certainly appreciate what it is you want to do, but I have some questions with Mr. Is this the, we, we have gotten virtually nothing in our package tonight, other than it's a proposed Italian restaurant at 15 South Cass, family-oriented. Is 15 South Cass where George's was?
Yes, ma'am.
Is, what's this going to be called? Do we have a name?
Navarro's.
Usually, Mr. Navarro, no offense to you, but we put people through their paces to make sure that it's a good fit with our downtown. Okay? So I'm going to request that we have a copy of the interior plan.
Okay.
Like to see what the outside of the building's going to be done, because it's obviously not going to be called George's anymore. What's signage going to look like? Proposed menu, we have frowned upon putting quote-unquote "fast food" in downtown. So if it's going to be gourmet Italian at night and fast food during the day, that's going to be, I'd like to see a proposed menu, how that's going to work. And what, is the walk-up window going to be used at all?
Yes.
For what?
Sandwiches and, in the summer, lemonades and ice creams.
Mr. Navarro, what's your, what's your, your personal background as far as I'm familiar with... familiar with Pasta Vinos in Schiller's Park from many years ago. But what's your background in the restaurant business?
Mine? I owned Navarros in Norwich until 2006. Did some consulting work at the last, in the last few years at Onesties in St. Charles, Tivoli in Westmont, Sopa's Restaurant in Highwood. I did bring a video, if it's possible to play, play it. You could get an idea of our product. And it's a food critic who came in and did a segment at our, one of our locations.
Mr. Kimball, if you could download some of that via email for us prior to Monday night, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Navarro, do you have any plans, and you're going to think it's a goofy question, but we need to know, of opening a restaurant to put it up for sale within rapid succession? Okay.
Seating? We've talked about seating. I know it's not a very big place, but how many do you think?
Approximately 36 seats.
We will continue our discussion on item two at a later date. Next item, development permit request, 40 and 42 South Cass. Board to consider development permit request from Ms. Janice Esmond for a retail lighting and design center at 40 and 42 South Cass.
Good evening. My name is Jan Esmond. I currently have a business in Burr Ridge called Burr Ridge Lighting and would like to relocate my business here in downtown Westmont. I liked your statement about pushing those retailers and it really made me feel good. We have been in business for 23 years in the same location, so we are a stable business. It's just that with the business of building homes these days, the retail space that we carry is just way too big for us. So I am proposing to bring in, hopefully, a lot of business to your downtown area with my lighting showroom. We will not be called Burr Ridge Lighting anymore. It will be called BR Lighting and Design Center. I do carry upscale lighting and furniture and, not huge furniture, little chairs, tables, et cetera. And love what I do. Hopefully, you'll like it, too. I said I was glad that I was second on the list, because then I would know what to do to follow somebody, but I don't want to follow what just happened. So I'm not too nervous, but if there are any questions, I would be very happy to answer them.
Questions, board members?
I just want to comment that Jan, when I built my house, I bought all my lights at Burr Ridge Lighting.
Thank you.
And I'm actually redoing everything, so.
Come in now. We have a big sale going on. It's a clearance sale, blowout sale, because I can't bring all those really big, huge fixtures to this store.
And the other thing that people don't know, because they may look at this and say, well, the retail space is so small, there's not a lot, is that unbeknownst to me, till I went in there and talked to you and your staff, you have tons of manufacturers' catalogs to go through. So what you see hanging on the ceilings and the walls is about one one-hundredth of everything you have available.
Probably. I carry about 80 to 90 different manufacturers and there is no way that I could carry everything that's in their books.
Mm-hmm.
But thank you for your patronage.
I'm thrilled.
Well, we would be very happy to have you here in Westmont.
Thank you.
And as I ask every new business, will you be joining our Chamber of Commerce?
I was just telling Larry, I said, I just got my notice to join the Willowbrook Burr Ridge Chamber of Commerce, and I kind of pushed it on the side, sorry, so that I could join the Westmont Chamber of Commerce.
Great.
So yes, I will be joining the Chamber of Commerce.
Wonderful.
How many square feet?
I believe there is a total of 2,500 square feet. I will be occupying the, the front of the unit where the yoga place is right now, plus the next unit over.
Oh, cool. Nice.
Yeah, basically that corner.
Yeah, and good visibility.
How long do you think before you open? What is your anticipation?
As soon as I get the build-out done.
Okay.
And I get your blessing.
Okay. But it won't be in time for Christmas, unfortunately.
It'll probably be right after Christmas.
But in time for the building year, which is nice.
Yes.
Okay. I love lightings. They're absolutely stunning when you go past their windows.
And there are so many different designs going on now.
So, oh, there are. No, I'm, now, did you say this is actually going to be a little larger than what you're in, or?
Actually, it will be a little bit smaller than what we're in. We're in a building that is about 10,000 square feet right now, but it did house our electrical section. My husband runs the electrical warehouse. And they moved to another location on South Frontage Road. They will remain in Burr Ridge, but we will come out here. We, we do the pretty stuff. They do the behind-the-walls stuff. So I think that it would be a very good fit for your community and I'm really excited to be coming into a nice, fresh location.
Are you having much in truck traffic, or just as you order the items, they come in?
Actually, that was a very big concern of mine. Because of the fact that the doorways are only 36 inches wide, most of our big truck shipments that have multiple and large-sized fixtures will go to our location still in Burr Ridge. It will usually be UPS trucks, nothing big, nothing, no big semis or anything like that, because we can't accept pallets there.
Okay.
So it would be just UPS trucks.
So whatever thing fits through the door?
Yes.
And then the rest of it, so you're still keeping your, your other location?
Well, that is where the electrical location is, would be on South Frontage Road. We are on North Frontage Road right now and that location, we are vacating completely.
Okay. So the other location will be there for your big items and the rest of them will be here in Westmont?
Correct. Yes, they have a dock and a large warehouse that will house a lot of the larger fixtures.
So this will be more your showroom?
Yes.
Very nice.
And our design center.
We have Shannon Melick from our staff, might make some comments?
I tried to get a handle to you.
I just wanted to point out that there's more than ample parking for this use at Westmont Station, based on the current mix of tenants there. We estimate that the parking requirement is about three spaces. That should be provided on-site, but we also have that provision where if three or fewer spaces are required, we could administratively allow the use there.
Okay.
Plus, I believe that the tenant parking, the people that do own the units above have parking underneath. So that helps a lot also. And there is a sidewalk, so that I could have people walking by. All I have is the I-55 right now and nobody walks on I-55.
Okay, any other questions, board members?
No. Sounds great.
Thank you for coming in. It will be on our agenda for consideration on Monday evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next item, final plat, 1 and 5 East Ogden, Walgreens. Board to consider the following requests. A, final plat of subdivision to consolidate three parcels into one buildable lot. And B, plat of vacation for utility easement.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Here for the final consideration for the consolidation. As everybody sees, we're well underway. Walgreens wanted to open yesterday. And I just want to get the building built before they change it on me once again. I trust that everybody saw the new elevations and thank you for your blessing. This truly is a very unique building compared to all the other Walgreens that I've built and they've built nationally. Really a first of its kind.
Still looking at Easter of 11?
Yeah.
Wow, that's great.
Could you expound just a little bit on what, what makes this Walgreens a little different than all the rest?
It makes it a lot different than just about every other Walgreens that you'll ever see. One, there's many new initiatives that Walgreens is going through internally. The real estate department is going through a revamp of their store. They want a fresh new look, more windows, polished concrete floors, similar to what you'll see in a Whole Foods or a Home Depot, open ceilings rather than their typical grid, grid style. There's going to be flat-screen TVs, not to watch a football game, but more so for educational purposes. The building is a more modern look as well, as you can see from the elevations that were Really, it's just, it's a revamp of what they've already done and created. And they, because Westmont is so close to corporate in Deerfield, and this is the very first ground-up development with this timing, they decided to make this change after we already received the building permit for the old building. And when I say old, I mean for the, the standard building.
Okay.
That was already approved. They're spending a lot of money, as you can imagine, to do this and to have it open by Easter. For the debt, for the Easter deadline, I'm not exactly sure, I'm not privy to that information, why Easter is so important. However, they mandated that it's very important. I have it open by Easter. So. Let me take just 10 seconds, a couple of seconds to talk about, the deadlines that Walgreens has given us have been very, very difficult. And I think you should be very proud of your staff here in Westmont. They've really helped us expedite a very difficult process and facilitate this to meet the deadlines that Walgreens has put on all of us. So I want to thank you for that and my consultants have been very pleased with the staff here, so.
Thank you.
Should be noted.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Is this the beginning of the new look for Walgreens, or is this just going to be the only one like this?
I actually presented at the Architectural Review Committee in another municipality last night, so this is the beginning of a new look, and I think nationally. But this, Westmont, believe it or not, is the testing ground for it nationally. If anybody has seen the Walgreens in Oak Park on Madison Avenue, just opened two weeks ago or last week, that is a retrofit of an existing building that Westmont was, I don't want to say based off of, but they started to retrofit a building and then they said, you know what, Westmont is the first ground-up development, we want to try it here. So this is a true testament of what they wanted nationally.
Great.
Thank you. Other comments? I know you've run into some interesting problems, like coming across three buried gasoline tanks that were not discovered by the previous White Castle that was at that location. And I'm sure that you've taken all the steps necessary to correct that with the EPA and it's, it's just moving along very, very well. It's a difficult project, but it's, it's fun to watch from afar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. On our agenda for Monday. Next item, development requests, Westmont Market. Board to consider the following requests. A, map amendment to rezone four parcels from our three single-family detached residence district to be to a general business district. B, plat of subdivision to consolidate seven parcels into one buildable lot. C, signage zoning code variance to A, allow more than two identification signs on a corner lot. B, allow electronic message board as principal sign. C, allow electronic message board to consist of 100% of signed surface area. And D, all photographic images on electronic message board. D, site and landscaping plan approval for a 33,000-square-foot specialty food store. And E, masonry waiver request. Like to handle this on the following manner. I'd like the petitioners to come up and give their presentation. When they're finished, I'd like to have Fred Kimball and the village staff present the information that they have available for us this evening. And then, public comment, however, with the elected officials to have them interject at any point during the time for answers to questions that they might have. Please proceed.
Well, good evening. I'm Andre Redant, one of the partners in the project. And we're going to tag-team you a little bit tonight, if that's all right. Vince is going to make some comments when I'm done and feel free to ask questions before Vince comes up, if you like. And then, we have also brought with us professionals for, for traffic, civil engineering and architecture. And I think Carlos is going to say a few things, too, regarding the masonry request. So let me give you just a little bit of background, a little refresher on who we are. Me and my partners from, from West Highland that are proposing this project, we've worked together, I think Tim and I, for 15 years and for long periods of time in the food business in California, running a company called Bolthouse Farms, which was a family business in my family. We built the business dramatically over the years and finally came to a point in 2005 where I suggested to the board that if we ever were going to sell the company, we had a terrific story internally. We'd grown the business, we'd launched a beverage business in addition to a bunch of carrot businesses, opened a Japanese division that does carrot juice concentrate, developed a logistics business. And I thought, well, look, the tax, the tax treatment couldn't be any better and we see that now with what's happening with the Bush tax cuts, for the family to consider. And then, and then lastly, the M&amp;A market was strong. So we sold the business in 2005. I continued to have an active role running the company until 2008. During those, those years, we had the opportunity to work with virtually every major retailer in North America. Tim ran sales and so we got to know and spent a lot of time looking at concepts. And, and through that process, as you can, well, imagine maybe, we're pretty entrepreneurial guys. We had come up with the concept, which is fleshed out with the presentation that we're going to make to you tonight. So I'm just going to talk a little bit about the concept and maybe refresh or introduce, reintroduce the concept to you and then talk about a few other things and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Vince. So maybe you can throw up the next slide, or maybe I can do it. Which button do I, arrow down? There it is. And I'll, I'll take you, if it's okay, I'll take you through, through the store a little bit. But before I do, this is really about a celebration of food. So this, this isn't really, it's different than an organic concept like a Whole Foods, where maybe it's more about nutrition and maybe it's about, a little bit more about the environment. This is executive chef-driven and this is, the idea is to get people excited about food. And there's a variety of ways that you can experience what, what we offer. I mean, we'll have traditional departments like produce, meat and seafood, dairy, bakery, deli, I don't know if I'm forgetting any dairy. We'll have a wine and beer and cheese section. Sort of a curated approach. When you're, when you're trying to sell mostly perishable products, velocity is, is critical to offering fresh products to people. So we'll offer somewhat of a curated selection. So instead of, well, I won't get, I mean, I don't know how much, I don't want to bore you too much with it, but in carrots, rather than eight or nine SKUs, we'll carry the two big SKUs and we'll have right pricing, the right kind of displays, and we believe we can turn a lot of volume by focusing on the major items in each category. In addition to all that, we're going to have a restaurant concept in the center of the store. So soup, salad, sandwiches, pizza, and then a what's-for-dinner-tonight concept that we'll serve every night, that'll be rotating. And so we'll have variety over time, as opposed to variety in the moment, and that kind of ties into the whole freshness thing. Some exciting things, valet parking, we're using technology in some pretty interesting ways. So we, as you can see from what we're showing you, are putting our best foot forward and not sparing any expense in this first store, which is really a prototype and an opportunity to refine a concept, which we then intend to roll out in Chicagoland. That's, we'll do our learning and, and we're already working on, on subsequent sites, most of which are in DuPage County as well. But this is the first one and, and, you know, we're, we're very excited about it. Wanted to touch a little bit, Vince is going to get much more into detail on this, but, you know, it's no secret that, that we've been working with the neighbors to try to come up with a solution that works for everybody. And I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I've been very encouraged, especially of late, that good relationships can and will exist with the neighbors. It's very important to us, not, not just because we want to have a good relationship with them around the store, but, you know, we, we want to be part of Westmont. Our headquarters, as some of you may know, is, is here, really right, right in the neighborhood, right by the neighborhood. And, you know, we, we believe and we want to go the extra mile, as far as we can, to really develop and build that relationship and, and we think that we've done that. And then, before I turn it over to Vince, I, I too want to really thank the staff of Westmont. We've had a terrific experience. We're rookies at this, so we're just learning. But we're like drinking from a fire hose, I suppose, but we think we are learning pretty quickly. And your staff has been very helpful, very professional and supportive in helping us get up to speed. So I don't know, does anybody want to ask me any questions now, or do you want to do that later?
Probably wait and do it later.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Hello to all of you. I've met most of you. My name is Vince Priest. I've worked with the five partners here for just about 16 years. I relocated myself and my family to Chicagoland four years ago, started a logistics company for Bolthouse Farms. It was very transportation inbound and outbound intensive, as well as IT-intensive. We had a warehouse management system. We dealt with all the major retailers east of the Mississippi, from Halifax, Nova Scotia, down to Richmond, Virginia. So, I'm pretty well-versed in distributing in the retail grocery store business. But anyways, with the specifics of this project, it's our understanding that you're all familiar with our project. I just wanted to take a moment to refresh in your mind the fundamentals of the design. So, what we're proposing is a 33, Andre, you didn't use.
Oh, I can do it for you.
Well, I can do them for you. I'll do this for all of you, but this is the store, that's the exterior elevation, and that would be standing at McGrath, Accura, looking south and west. That would be walking into our produce department. That would be looking into the wine and cheese department. That window that you see right there is the window that you see under the word "Westmont Market." Anyways, that's our wine and cheese department. That's the bakery. We'll have a scratch bakery inside the store. This is the cafe and deli section. That's our butcher shop. You can see all that glass right there. You'll actually see meat on the hook inside the building. There'll be butchers with white smocks on, with a little blood on it, cutting the meat the way that you want it cut. There'll be fishmongers on site, and that's the checkout area. We're going to have homemade ice cream. We're going to have the most aggressive price-on milk, egg, butter, cheese in this department to get people in. And that's a picture as you're entering our restaurant. You'll see there where the shadow person is on the right, it says "What's for Dinner Tonight." That's one of the big hooks that we're going to use to get people to shop at our store and to come back. You'll be able to enjoy What's for Dinner Tonight three ways. So, you can come in, and the meal will be ready to go. You can pick it up, you can go on our website, log in, order the food, and pay for it. You can pick up a recipe card, and you can shop in each of the departments and get the ingredients for What's for Dinner Tonight, or you can enjoy it in the restaurant. So anyways, Andre, I was just finishing up for your laptop, so now on to my part. This is the site at present, and what you'll see there is Old Plank Road Antiques, and immediately adjacent to that, to the west, would be Car X. And then, behind it is Continued Asphalt Parking Lot. And then, to the right or to the west of that asphalt parking lot is a vacant parcel that would be our access to Blackhawk. I think another thing that you should notice from this photo is that all of those wires that you see there, we're going to go to great engineering expense, climate energy, work with ComEd, we're going to underground all that stuff. So, that will help the neighbors with wires tipping over and tree branches falling on, and we're going to underground all that stuff. So, what you'll see when we're done is this will turn into this if it's approved. So, again, that would be standing at McGrath, Accura, looking south and west. That would be in the parking lot of the building, which is on the south side of the site, and you're looking north. So, that's actually the entrance of our building, and that is the aforementioned valet parking drop-off right there. And I'll show you a site plan, so it'll all make sense, but I'm just walking you around the building right now. Okay, this is the parking lot of Old Plank Antique, and you can see that it's in tremendous disrepair, quite a bit of overgrowth there, no stormwater, it's all sheet runoff at present. And this is what it will look like when it's completed. So, present, proposed, okay? And then, this is looking due west at the Blackhawk parcel. It's currently subject to squatters. There's some forts back there, there's a lot of garbage and beer cans back there. When we're done, this is what it will look like. So, there'll be a footpath for pedestrians, as well as parking spaces. Another thing that we're doing is we're going to have 10-foot parking spaces so that people can get in and out. Most of the stores have nine footers. And then, this is the site plan. So, I was really doing all that just to say before and after, before and after, but the specifics of the site plan and the features are that there's three very prominent points of access for the customers. You have from Ogden Avenue to the west side of the Ogden parcel. You have from Richmond Street, and you have from Blackhawk. We're proposing a commercial development that, when we're done, will be landscaped like a first-class residential neighborhood. And to amplify that point, I'd just like to direct you to the comment from your village staff when they reviewed our plan, and they said, quote, "The landscape features and pedestrian orientation of this development could serve as a benchmark of quality for future projects in the Village of Westmont." And I'd also like to point out that, at present, in front of Old Plank Antique, there are in excess of 15 very mature, large diameter trees. I believe they're between five and seven inches in diameter. We're going to be able to transplant those trees from in front of Old Plank Antique to the southern end of the property. So, where you see that site plan right there, on the bottom, the very southernmost part there, there's a family that lives there that we've been working with, and there's also residential on the Blackhawk parcel as well. We're going to take those 17 trees, and they'll have the benefit of an immediate mature landscape buffer as soon as those trees are transplanted. Another feature of this site is that the building, as you can see from the plan, has been situated as far as possible from the adjacent residential neighborhood. It's the minimum setback from Ogden Avenue, which is 30 feet. And then, also, we're going to be installing a stormwater management system that'll help reduce flooding in the area. At present, there's 4.2 acres there that are subject to zero stormwater code, and we're going to bring this whole system up to current DuPage County stormwater code. So, that was just to reintroduce and familiarize yourselves with the program or with the project. And, you know, now I'd like to take a moment to mention that, you know, we didn't arrive at this level of detail overnight. Throughout the process, we've met with numerous individuals in Westmont and the surrounding area. Those groups include the uniquely impacted neighbors. Those are all the folks, so the Kanopkas, which are, I believe their address is 512 Richmond Avenue, the Looz, 513 Blackhawk, the Lonnys, 514 Blackhawk, the Pools, 512 Blackhawk, the Karishes, 508 Blackhawk, Tim, Timothy Optinorth and his wife Carrie Brugel at 507 Blackhawk, Jim Addington, Robert Zapinski, and many, many, many more. We've met with numerous individuals and neighbors in the area. We've met with civic leaders. We've met with concerned citizens of Westmont. We've met with the zoning and board members. We've met with several members of this board. And it was apparent at the first planning and zoning meeting that there was significant concerns, neighborhood concerns, not so much from the village, not so much from P&amp;Z, not so much from the trustees, but neighbors, okay? And that came out in that meeting, and from, that meeting was on October 13th, on October 14th at 9:00 AM. Matter of fact, the minute that meeting ended at 12:30 PM, I met with Jim Addington at 12:31 by the elevator out there, and I met him the next morning at 9:00 AM, and our office is from 9:00 AM to noon. And we've been trying to address these neighbors' concerns. And, you know, we've tried to demonstrate a significant level of compromise, which I'd like to highlight for you folks right now. And further, it's worth noting that compromise doesn't always begin with the onset of neighbor interaction. But our compromise began at the beginning of this project, and our first compromise was that we cited the store 30 feet off of Ogden Avenue and 323 feet from the nearest neighbor. So, the back of that store is more than a football field, well in excess of a football field to the nearest neighbor. This immediately softened the transition from a business zone to a residential zone. The next thing that we did is we placed the loading docks. If you'll look there on the west side of the building, the loading docks and the dumpsters are between our building and Alpha Motors. So, the sort of unsavory side of this business, which is trucks clanging into dock doors and dumpsters being lifted, raised and lowered, and clanged around, they're happening as far away from the residences as we possibly can, and they're even indented into the building the way that we've cut out that notch there. Anyways, as our conversations began with neighbors and as our conversations progressed with neighbors, we started making more compromises. So, we eliminated one of our points of ingress and egress that we really felt like we needed, but we've eliminated it to address their concerns, and that would be on Richmond Avenue at the south end of the parcel. And that was to soften the transition from our parking lot to the residential neighbors. We moved the boundary fence at the southern end of the property 10 feet north. It can go on the property line. We moved it 10 feet north. We're installing a six-foot barrier fence. The code requires that we put in a four-foot fence. We're putting in a six-foot fence. We're landscaping both sides of the barrier fence. We're forcing our delivery trucks. If you notice where they come down from that dock there, you see there's a little finger that sticks out. Those trucks have, they leave the dock, they turn left through our parking lot, and they'll turn left out of our parking lot and head north on Richmond Avenue, and there will be a sign to this effect that says, "Delivery trucks must turn left as they egress the property." And we'll be able to control this because the trucks that come on and off the site will be our trucks. There'll be a couple vendors, probably a fish vendor and maybe a few other fresh food vendors, and we'll require that of our vendors, that they exit through that exit and that they turn left and they use Ogden Avenue. And they won't be able to turn onto Blackhawk. If you see that finger that's sticking out right there, it's concrete, it'll be a raised curb, they wouldn't be able to make that turn to get to Blackhawk. So anyways, we also, in talking with the neighbors, we increased the size of that driveway for Ogden Avenue. We initially proposed 24 feet. We've talked with IDOT and talked with our civil engineer, and it's now a 30-feet, very prominent entrance from Ogden Avenue into the site. So, that would be if you were at Blackhawk, heading east, say, towards Chicago. If you want to turn right into the site right there, you'll see there's a sign that says "Westmont Entrance," and it's a 30-foot driveway. That was in response to the neighbors. So, you know, I'd just like to add that although we haven't been able to please all the neighbors, I believe that we've made some significant inroads with the naysayers, and we've developed some relationships and even some friendships with the neighbors. And we've been working really hard at this, as I've detailed in some of those meetings, and there have been several. And we'll continue to work with the, what we'll call, uniquely impacted neighbors, and those include as follows. Michael and Mary Lonnie, their home is, it's right across from the entrance on Blackhawk Drive there, and we have proposed to install at our expense a turnaround for them to make a three-point turn so they can nose out of their driveway rather than back out of their driveway, as well as install a landscape buffer, which will look like that. We've also met with and spoken with Bob and Susan Poole, which are their neighbors immediately to the south of them. We've only had a chance to speak with them one time. However, I'm standing in front of you all tonight and committing that I will have follow-up meetings with them if this thing is approved and try to work out a solution for them as well. We've met with Ray and Wendy Kanopka, and this is their home at present on the left. That's the adjacent home to the right. It's approximately 13 feet from their home to the adjacent home, approximately. And this is what we are proposing. There's a three-foot difference in grade from the parking lot to their home, as well as a six-foot fence. That fence will be, like you said, it'll be nine feet above grade where their home is at present. Their lot's 50 feet, it will appear as though their lot is 60 feet. I believe their lot's 51.5. It'll appear that it's 61.5 now. So, we've met with Mr. and Mrs. Lou, they live at 513 Blackhawk, and we're going to move the fence north adjacent to their property line. We've proposed a very significant, robust, mature landscape buffer there as well. We've met with groups from Blackhawk Street Neighbors. At the close of the last P&amp;Z meeting, we had met with myriad individuals in the neighborhood. They requested that we meet with groups from the neighborhood, and we declined to meet with groups from the neighborhood because we felt it would be more productive to address people as individuals and their concerns as individuals. However, at the close of that meeting, we felt like the neighbors felt that we owed that to them. So, got on the phone the next morning with Jim Addington. I wrote a letter to Jim Addington and said, "I understand that you guys wanted to meet a group. We heard you last night." And we met with them this week as a group, a group of individuals from Blackhawk, a group of individuals from Richmond. They had some good ideas, one of which at the P&amp;Z meeting was that we make that entrance from Ogden, not a delivery entrance, but also a customer entrance, and we did that. Another one that they suggested was that we look into speed radar signs that could be installed on Blackhawk. We're not committing to this, we're saying that we will explore it. We don't know what the costs are, this only came up 48 hours ago, so we're not saying yes, we're not saying no, but it was proposed, and we're saying we have an open mind to this. So, we would participate in that, assuming we understand the costs. Another concern or request that came up out of those meetings was from Kim Wagner, and she said, "You know, I really want a sidewalk on the street in front of my house. I live on Blackhawk, excuse me, I live on Richmond, and you guys are going to be putting in a sidewalk to the southern boundary of your property. I'd like to see it extended to the corner of Trobee and Richmond." And we said we will explore that. So, the issue is, I'm not sure that all the neighbors want it, and I'm also not sure about jogging the sidewalk around people's fences and stuff, but we're open-minded once we understand what the costs are. If we can accommodate it, we will. So, I guess in summary, you know, I'd like to say to you all here, everybody here, people on TV, you know, we want to have a business here. Partners have relocated here. We've invested significantly in this design project. We've got really nice offices just down the street from here that are going to be the corporate headquarters for this business. We look forward to your questions, to hearing your thoughts. And to that end, we've brought some experts with us. We have consultants that will help us with architectural, civil engineering, as well as traffic. So, I'm going to have Carlo stand up just for a moment to talk about the masonry issue, and then we'll all be available to answer questions thereafter.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Carlo Burns, I'm with the WD Partners. I'm here to formally ask for a masonry waiver. Give me a second, we'll get started. Well, as you know, there's a requirement here in Westmont that dictates that all buildings, all commercial buildings have to be masonry, which we certainly understand that request, and we understand the nature of the request. We, however, feel that this particular building type is not well-suited for that particular request. Upon a little more conversation with Fred, he was kind enough to share with me that the true concern was durability, the aesthetics of certain construction that you've seen that weren't happy with, and I'm basically here to address those concerns. What I'd like to do is kind of run through some of these slides to indicate what the construction type, how we implement, how we want to implement the building. What this is showing is basically a roof plan. We're proposing a steel skeleton with an infill of metal studs, and then a product called Hardy Plank in the exterior material. It's a cementitious siding product. It's very durable, it's cement-based, it's impervious to fire, it's fire-resistant, I should say. And, you know, I'm very confident in the product, it carries a 30-years manufacturer's Here's a perspective view indicating the perimeter walls, along with the roof framing. What you're looking at is basically the gable ends are wood trusses at all the peaked roofs with flat areas in the center and immediately adjacent to the loading dock. The purpose of the flat roofs is to provide areas for us to install our mechanicals and provide screening from all the neighbors. We went through the trouble of creating false gables at each end, which creates, in essence, a pool or a recess in the building that would screen all the mechanicals from your neighbors, from our neighbors. Another similar view, just kind of indicating the portco shares or the cupboard carports. That's where we're going to have the valet parking. So, we feel it's a responsible solution. You know, it provides weather protection for the customers. Another perspective indicating the window openings, as you can see... Another perspective indicating the window openings. As you can see, we have some pretty aggressive window openings. Some of these are between thirty to forty feet, depending on the openings. The hope is to transition between indoor and outdoor. Another view indicating the structure. What you're looking at, basically, the true structure is the trusses above, and then we're introducing a secondary structure, which is a heavy timber truss on the interior. Once again, just to reinforce that, we're looking at durability, and we're sparing no expense. Another similar view from another vantage point. Here's a few examples of similar types of material. All these projects that you're looking at, except for the ones under construction, are somewhere between, I don't know, ten to twelve years, depending on the project. These are projects I was personally involved with a number of years ago. Once again, just to show the level of finish and durability that you can get in these materials. These are all Hardy panel products, Hardy battened siding, a combination of stone veneer, Hardy panel. Another similar view. Once again, keeping in mind that these buildings have been up and running for at least a dozen years. This is an example of the type of construction that we're recommending. Basically, a steel skeletal frame with metal stud infill. In this particular case, they have a brick veneer, but in our case, we're, due to the nature, the aesthetics of the building, we're proposing a siding product. It just feels more residential. Another example, you know, metal stud infill, the steel skeletal frame, which you really can't see. Same building under, you know, eighty percent underway, and the finished product. So, I'd like to also provide some bullet points in terms of why we believe this is the right solution for this particular building. I've broken it down into different segues. The first is energy efficiency. With this proposed construction type, we're going to achieve an R-value of about R-24. With masonry, traditional masonry construction, we can only get to about R-20. Beg your pardon. It provides basically a twenty percent increase in energy. It would allow our building to be in full compliance with energy codes. Steel is roughly ninety percent recyclable here in the United States, so it's socially the responsible thing to do. And once again, it just provides a level of efficiency to the building, both in terms of economics and social responsibility. The second is exterior design and aesthetics. With masonry, it would be very difficult to achieve the kind of openings that we're hoping for. The weight of masonry prevents us to, from achieving these openings, forty, forty-five foot openings. We would require larger beams, and unfortunately, due to the height of the building, we would require intermediate bracing, which frankly would severely impact our ability to properly design the building. It would, we would never be able to achieve the look that we're hoping to achieve because we would have all kinds of bracing and all kinds of structural elements that we would have to hide. So, in essence, we believe we'd have to build interior down to hide those elements, which we're hoping to avoid. Another good thing about using metal studs, we would be able to use the perimeter walls as chaise walls, this being, this being a grocery store in essence. We need space to run mechanicals. There's all kinds of wiring, all kinds of plumbing, things of that nature, and that's just very difficult to do in masonry for obvious reasons. We would actually have to provide furring on the interior, the exterior, which would mean that we'd have a wall that would be about sixteen to eighteen inches thick in lieu of eight inches. You know, once again, compromising available square footage that our clients would have. It just, we believe, we frankly believe that this is the right solution for this building type. It's not a question of economics. It's a question of the right material for this building. There's certainly no doubt, masonry is durable, but as you've seen, we properly detail buildings. This is a very common building practice. Our proposed construction, it's not a life safety issue. We can provide a one-hour fire rating with no issue. Durability, once again, Hardy plank, which I believe we have some samples. It's a cementitious product. Thank you. It's unaffected by moisture. Actually ran across a material eighteen years ago when I was working on certain car wash designs. We needed to find a material that would last forever and was impervious to freeze stall cycles. And once again, that seems to be the right material. They're still open. They're still operational. There's been no need to repair or callbacks. So, I feel confident enough to install it in my own home. And, well, we just think it's, once again, the right product for this job. That's all I have. Any questions?
I have a couple for you real quick on your building design. You're, like you say, you're basically using a steel frame construction. So, I'm assuming by what you're talking about, you're going to use an eight-inch wall stud on the exterior of this product?
Correct. We're looking at a W, somewhere along a W-12.
Okay.
And then infilling with eight-inch metal stud to get the R-value that we're looking for.
Now, your exterior, you're saying then you're going to use a twelve gauge? Is that what you're looking at?
It depends. Once again, it depends on loads. I can't tell you the gauge off the top of my head. We're not quite that far in design yet.
Okay.
But we'll certainly meet all requirements for wind, snow load. Those parameters are dictated by code, so we'll certainly meet those.
The other question I have for you, I noticed, how much of the actual interior of the store is exposed all the way to the roof line?
I'd say probably, once again, that's a tough question. I'm going to tell you roughly, my gut feeling tells me about thirty percent.
Okay, and then the rest is going to have like an interior
Correct.
Drywall structure up, and then the heavier wood timbers below that, correct?
We're articulating the interior with different materials, whether it be drywall, wood panels. You know, we're still investigating the interior design, to be honest with you.
I'm just curious as to why, in that particular case, in the areas that would not be exposed, why you wouldn't consider using a steel structured truss instead of a wood truss?
Frankly, because the gables, we're using what's called a SIP panel, a structural insulated panel.
Right.
So, it just seems, they work well together. The SIP panel works well with wood trusses, and then the smaller gables, just to have one less trade on site, we would propose using the same wood trusses as well.
Okay.
The building's fully sprinkled, so if you're concerned about fire protection, life safety is certainly foremost on our minds, so.
If you could, if you could back that up, a couple of frames where it shows the exposed truss on this one building, right there. Now, what I'm looking at in that wood truss up there above looks to me like that is a fire retardant stud, based on the color.
Correct. Fire retardant, it's a code requirement, so there's no doubt about that. It would have to be an FRT, or fire retardant treating trust. And then most likely, we would have to have some upturned sprinkler heads in that space, in the attic space.
Okay.
And then, once again, code, I won't bore you with all the nuances of code, but code goes into great detail in terms of life safety. We would provide compartments of about three thousand square feet in drywall to prevent the spread of fire or smoke. Once again, I wish I could tell you that we're doing this in good faith, but it's required by code.
I'm very familiar with this type of construction. I've done it for forty years, so, that's why I'm asking the questions that I'm asking.
All good questions.
As far as the exposure on the inside of the building, and as far as going to the Manufacturer-wise, I'm very familiar with the Hardy plank. It is a very good product. It's a very durable product. A lot of builders started to use this, even on single-family homes. The combination of the wood and the metal has gotten to be very commonplace.
Yes, it has.
A lot of structures now, as far as that. But the biggest thing that you're dealing with is the fire retardancy. And so long as, so long as it's manufactured in such a way in the specs, it shouldn't pose any problems whatsoever. But I just, you know, I would, I just had to ask that question. I was just curious as to why you would go with the wood truss above the ceiling line versus using a skeletal steel-type truss?
To be honest with you, it holds screws better.
Right.
Wind uplift isn't a problem in Chicago, and it's just, it's the right solution.
Okay.
You know, we would be looking at eight-inch screws, and I want them to go into a material that's going to hold the screw.
Okay.
So, you know, none of what we're proposing is, in order to save cost, it's just a responsible solution for the problem.
Any other questions at this time? Is there anyone else that, from your group, that's going to present anything?
I think that's it. Wrapping it up.
Okay. Fred Kimball, could I ask you to come up with Village staff and?
Thank you, your honor, members of the Westmont Village Board. Staff appreciates the opportunity to stand before you here tonight and give you the strongest professional recommendation that we can endorsing this site plan. I've been involved in state and local government and the field of economic development for the better part of thirty-five years, and I can honestly stand before you today and tell you, I have never before in my entire career seen a commercial site development plan that has been geared towards this degree of neighborhood friendliness as this particular project that is before you tonight. The petitioners have already indicated that their concern for the neighborhood and their desire not to be intrusive into the residential neighborhood preceded any public knowledge or neighbor awareness of this project because they moved the building as far north on the property line as they could to get it as far away from the neighbors. We think that shows, in the pre-planning stages of this project, great concern for the wishes and the needs of the neighbors to the south. The robust landscaping plan that Village landscape architect Bob Fleck has already commented on and called a benchmark is further evidence of that. We also think that from a traffic design, this proposal is extremely neighborhood-friendly. We believe that the site was developed with a traffic dispersion philosophy in mind. That is a philosophy in the area of planning that says we should attempt to disperse traffic equally among our network of public streets so that we don't have an overabundance or a burden of traffic on any one particular street. Now, according to the professionally conducted traffic study, employing several worst-case scenario assumptions for this, the net result of a grocery store placement on these properties, we think, will result in the addition of one additional car through the residential neighborhood every eight to ten minutes. And that's using some worst-case scenario assumptions in that traffic study. Let me illustrate just one of those worst-case scenario assumptions for our listening audience. I think the Village Board is already aware of this. But when attempting to evaluate what kind of traffic would be generated by this grocery store, the traffic engineers assumed, knowing that this was a thirty-three-thousand square foot grocery store, that instead, for the worst-case scenario approach, they assumed the traffic generated by a sixty-thousand-square-foot grocery store. So, I think you can see that they built into this traffic study some adverse assumptions in terms of the petitioners and trying to weight it in favor of the neighbors. We think, once again, that shows a very neighborhood-friendly attitude in the creation of this site plan. We believe that they've gone to considerable expense to employ the services of a professional traffic engineer utilizing industry standards and statistics and historical data for traffic generated here. Now, some critics have dismissed the findings of the study summarily by stating that they disagree and they think that there's going to be more traffic generated. We can only ask, what is the basis for that assumption? We believe there is very firm scientific data that has been put together by the professional traffic engineers creating this study. In terms of the stormwater engineering, some folks have argued, "Well, this is going to make my stormwater flooding problems worse in the neighborhood to the south of this area." I would once again point out for everyone's benefit that what we're doing here is taking seven parcels of land that have never before been engineered under modern stormwater engineering standards and applying those strict standards to these projects or to these parcels now that they will be developed and consolidated into one unified piece. And right now, I think the stormwater engineer, Mr. Tibbetts, testified quite eloquently at our second public hearing before planning and zoning, that if you look at the stormwater runoff during a one-hundred-year storm or a significant rainfall event right now from this roughly four-acre parcel of land, the water sheet flows off of this property directly to the south at the rate of twenty-three cubic feet per second per acre. Once the stormwater modern engineering plan is applied to this property, the water will be detained on-site in underground storage vaults and above-ground detention areas, and the new release rate will be one-half of one foot cubic feet per second per acre. So, think about that for just a second. What these developers are going to be doing is reducing the rate of stormwater flow off of this property by four-thousand-six-hundred percent from its current rate. Forty-six-hundred percent reduction in the rate of flow off of this property. And what they're doing, the problem that you have with a major storm event, the one-hundred-year storm, is that it dumps all at once in a very short period of time, and it exceeds the ability of any infrastructure to handle it. The modern stormwater design strategy is to capture that water and detain it on-site and release it at a much slower rate over several hours so that whatever storm sewer capacity you have can accept this over a much longer period of time without causing adverse flooding to the neighbors. So, if we are going to reduce the amount of stormwater flow off of this property by four-thousand-six-hundred percent, the next logical multiple-choice question becomes, will the result of this development be, A, a greater frequency and severity of flooding for the neighbors to the south, B, likely no effect, or C, it's likely to help improve the frequency and severity of stormwater incidents that these neighbors have to endure? And I think a logical response to that question is C. In addition to this, the developers are being required by the village to create a new eighteen-inch storm sewer line from the corner of their property, south on Richmond, to the storm sewer line on Traubie. This eighteen-inch storm sewer line in and of itself, because it's three hundred feet long, will allow the storage of additional stormwater capacity over and above that which is required by DuPage County and Westmont Village standards presently. Some critics have said, "Well, this is all for naught, because when this water flows down into the public storm sewer main on Traubie Avenue, we're all aware by virtue of the stormwater study that was conducted for the Village of Westmont by Christopher Burke, that we've got a problem there. We have a large storm sewer line that goes along Traubie, goes into a smaller storm sewer line, and then goes into a bigger storm sewer line as water takes its natural downhill flow through the Village of Clarendon Hills." I think the village intends to address that through an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Clarendon Hills in the future as we come to grips and try to budget for future stormwater problems. But even if that stormwater line stays the same as it is now, the tremendous amount of detention that is being provided on this property as a result of the stormwater engineering plan will still grant substantial relief to the neighbors there because it detains it on-site and doesn't allow it to sheet flow in an aggressive manner during and shortly thereafter a heavy rainfall incident. So, in either case, whether that storm sewer line along Traubie is increased in diameter or not, this will still offer considerable relief and improvement to the stormwater infrastructure of the immediate neighbor, neighborhood. Neighbors have argued, in some cases before the Planning and Zoning Commission, that construction of this property is going to devalue my property. It's going to make my house worth less than it is today. Well, let's think about this for just a second. If we're going to reduce the rate of stormwater flow onto your property, and you admit that you're already having a stormwater flooding problem now, if you put your house up for sale today, you will have to declare that as a pre-existing condition and declare that on your real estate listing. So, is the development of a new commercial property stormwater engineering plan that is contributing to your stormwater flooding problems, if it's going to make them better, is that likely to further reduce your property values, or is it likely to maybe help them a little bit because you're going to try to reduce some of the stormwater problems, the flooding problems that you've experienced in the past? One of the things that the petitioners did not mention was that by code, at the southern end of this particular site plan, and I think that would be down here where the Knopkas' residence is, village code requires a six-foot-wide landscaped buffer. To once again show that they are neighborhood-friendly, these developers have offered to make that landscape buffer area twenty-two feet, three inches wide, and place that six-foot-tall cedar plank fence ten feet off of the property line. In effect, this will give the neighbors to the south, even though they're not paying taxes on it, the constructive use of an additional ten feet of property in their rear yard and their side yard. We think, once again, that's a neighborhood-friendly concession that shows that these developers are willing to be good neighbors with the folks that they're going to be located next to. The offer to provide the landscaping for The offer to provide the landscaping for Mr. and Mrs. Lonnie and the turnaround in their front area, while it may not completely solve their problem, we think it goes a long way towards softening it and we think it's a, it's a generous gesture on the part of the developers to put money into that other property with the consent of the property owners to try to minimize some of the headlight intrusion onto their property. We think, from a macroeconomic development perspective, that redeveloping these fully-depreciated properties in this area, and you've seen some pictorial examples of that from Mr. Priest earlier today, is a big benefit to the Village of Westmont. We know that this project will create approximately one hundred and twenty new jobs and in this economy, that cannot be overstated. We look towards the generation of two to three hundred thousand dollars per year in additional sales taxes for the Village of Westmont. And perhaps more importantly, we look for an increase in the equalized assessed valuation on these dilapidated properties, which will shore up in a badly needed way, the property tax revenue stream for our public schools, our park district, our library district, and the Village of Westmont. We know that public entities are sorely in need of a bolstering of their revenue stream to provide the services to our children and our parks and our library and our village. We think this is very important. Lastly, I'd like to, to talk a little bit, and I guess this is a much more esoteric discussion, but I, I would like to present this for the board's consideration as you consider this project tonight. Just as nations strive to attain a favorable balance of trade, that is to export more goods and services than they import to create wealth for a nation, so too municipalities should try, to strive to export services to other areas and bring tax dollars into the community. Many neighbors have complained, well, this is going to bring shoppers from Hinsdale and Clarendon Hills and Darien up to shop in Westmont and then they're going to be traveling through our neighborhoods. Yes, that's true. Those cars will be traveling through the neighborhoods. But this is not something to be objected to. This is people from other communities coming to Westmont, shopping here, leaving their tax dollars here so that those tax dollars remain and perform services, buy services for the residents of our community. We want people to come into our town and shop and spend their tax dollars and then go home. We get to keep their tax dollars and pay police officer salaries, pay to plow the snow off of our streets in the wintertime and improve the quality of life for the people that do live in our town. So this is where we get back to the philosophy of doing that which provides the greatest good for the greatest number of people. Your Honor, members of the Village Board, we submit to you that for all of these reasons, this is a stellar project. It's one of the best I've ever seen in my entire career in terms of its economic impact to a community and in terms of the degree of neighborhood friendliness to the neighbors that they seek to locate next to. We encourage its adoption and we stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from board members before we open it up for public comment?
If I could, I, I just thought of one additional comment here. I know some of the neighbors have argued, and I neglected to in, in my discussion of the traffic dispersion theory, comment on one thing that has been a particular point of contention. And that is, some neighbors have said, well, I want a prohibition as you're coming out of Blackhawk here, a no-left-turn provision here so that customer traffic can't turn back southward through the neighborhood. And I want a no-right-turn provision here, thinking that in the long term, and at first blush, you might think, well, that will reduce the total volume of traffic through the neighborhood. But if we follow this through logically, I would submit to you that that's not really what would happen at all. Let's say we talk about people coming from Hinsdale, Clarendon Hills, and Darien to shop at our store. Those people, even if these two exits were not here and the only entrance was in and out of this project was on Ogden Avenue, those people coming from the south will still travel northward on both Richmond and Blackhawk to get to the store. Now, if they turn in here, then when they're ready to leave, knowing they can't come out and turn south, what's going to happen is, they're all going to go over here to Blackhawk, turn right on Ogden, and then come back over here and take the first opportunity to turn south. So what you've done is you've negated that dispersion theory of traffic by directing all of the southbound traffic over to Richmond. We think it makes much more sense from a planning strategy to say, let's disperse the traffic equally in the southbound direction on both Richmond and Blackhawk. That's the fair thing to do because if you put that no-left-turn on Blackhawk, it forces everything over here. And ladies and gentlemen, you cannot say no-right turns off of, of State Highway Thirty-four. I dot will not permit that. So all the traffic's going to come out here and turn south on Richmond. That's not fair to the people on Richmond. We think that you should allow traffic to go southward in both directions in the spirit of the dispersion theory of traffic management, which we think makes good sense in terms of a planning strategy. Sorry, Your Honor, I forgot to mention that.
Public comment? You'd like to step up to the podium, one at a time. We have a three-minute time allotment that we would like to see followed as closely as we can. And also to make sure that we don't repeat, if we can avoid it, comments that others have made regarding the same type of situation.
Sorry. Was I supposed to wait?
Hi, my name is Susan Poole. I live at five-twelve Blackhawk. Been living there for fifteen years. Actually, we lived here the first couple of years when we were married and actually moved back into the village, so been living here since nineteen ninety-five. I'm not opposed to opening a new business in the area. I think it's a great idea. The problem I have is taking residential lots across the street from us and turning them into business, which we were aware that those lots at some point would be built on, but we expected those to have houses on them, not looking into a parking lot. As far as the issue of headlights running, coming into my front window constantly in the evenings and now especially with this time of year where people have their headlights, headlights on a lot earlier and the in-and-out traffic, since they widen that street, it's a nightmare. It's a hazard driving down that street. People come flying down that street. My other concern is safety issues for accidents and other things, which is right in my front yard, people pulling in and out. The other issue I have is, they had discussed having a restaurant there. How are you going to monitor how much alcohol is being consumed by the people in the restaurant and then pulling out onto Blackhawk? That is another issue for me, a safety issue. The other issue I have is, I have teenagers driving. Safety issue there. We have a lot of children using the sidewalks in those areas. How are we going to monitor all that extra traffic going left and right and also me trying to get in and out of my street and also the safety issues for that matter? I am concerned about the business. I think it's a great idea. I think the guys are really nice. I don't have a problem with them. We've met with them. The issue I have is, is taking residential lots. Where do you draw the line then? If you keep changing that, where do you draw the line? If you keep moving the lots back, we're going to have all these businesses and my house is going to be looking into a parking lot. That's the biggest issue I have here. The business is not the issue. Looking into a parking lot every single day when I come home is. So that's basically all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, my name is Joe Herrn Surick. I live at two-twenty-four Naperville Road, so I'm a little bit south of the, this area. And basically, I've looked at the project. I've sat through the meeting. I've listened to discussions. You all received an email from me with some suggestions of things that we might do such as improved stop signage, warning that there's a stop sign ahead to get people to, basically, follow the laws that they should be following anyway that most people seem to ignore. With regard to the traffic, the traffic dispersal is a good point. I mean, the traffic, we don't know where it's going to go. It, it's going to go through the neighborhood more than likely. I think the traffic's going to come, basically the draw's going to come from Hinsdale, it's going to end Clarendon Hills and from Westmont. It's going to come up Chicago Avenue. People are going to come from Clarendon Hills Middle School, after-school, from Westmont Junior High. They're going to come that way. The school buses come that way too, at this time. But as far as the amount of traffic, I think you're going to find the dispersal very, very interesting. I suspicion that it will be going back up, the, the traffic from Oak Brook and that will probably be going back up Blackhawk Drive, over to Oakwood Drive, and then back up into Trinity Lakes and the developments up there, which are going to be a primary draw for this area. The business is, is a very good business. It's an excellent plan. I've not seen anything like it. Believe me, this is the best thing I have seen in my neighborhood, over and above any concerns of the traffic. And believe me, I tactically park. And if you know what tactically park means, is I back into my driveway so that my car is facing forward so I can get in and out. Learned that with Chrysler Motor Services, oversized trucks hauling Pepperidge Farm years ago, that I almost got clipped by one because I wasn't watching carefully enough, backing out of my driveway. It's the last time I backed out of my driveway. This will be an improvement for the community. It is better than, what is it, Fox Valley Excavating, which is at three-oh-one North Blackhawk. It is better than that little auto repair shop at three-oh-nine North Blackhawk. I've never seen, didn't see cooperation like this when the, what is it, Oak something, Oak Tree Terrace or Oak Tree Shopping Mall was built for the concern for the neighbors and the screening and that. This is a fabulous project compared to what we have, what we've seen in the past. I think this is merits, good consideration. I think you just have to address the issues and I would like to hear what's going on and what the plans are with the storm sewer going through Clarendon Hills, the intergovernmental agreement, if we made any progress and can figure a way to get the money for that. So basically, I, I support the project and I think it will be good for the village as a whole. It'll allow us to improve our village services. Again, the traffic, there are ways to monitor it and that is Village's responsibility. That's Mr. Malhern's job. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Wagner. I live at five-oh-eight North Richmond. I have met with Vince. I've spoken to him on the phone and the comments are true. They, they actually are trying. I will definitely indicate that. Do you guys watch the CNZ meetings? So you know I was the lady who counted the cars, right? Okay. I didn't just pick up the phone and say, hey, you're putting in the store, why don't you put a sidewalk in front of my house? Because I wanted you to understand that there is a sidewalk in front of my neighbor's house and it is the sidewalk to nowhere. It doesn't go anywhere south. It doesn't go anywhere north. There's, it's just there. And being that they're already digging up Richmond to put in all of this underground water detention stuff, I asked, well, instead of just putting more dirt back on top of it, can't we put the sidewalk in? And I do, I've, it's been explaining to me that it's a little bit more complex than just that simple, but they, they have agreed to definitely look into it. And that for me would, there's twenty-two children, I think it was stated at one of the meetings, right there in that general area, and I think that that will help protect the kids. And I think that's our concern, our, should be one of our major concerns, is protecting the community. A second major concern that I have is the rezoning. Now, I understand why it has to be done for this project, but in today's economy, we all know that businesses can fail, sell, for whatever reason, these, these things are possible. And my fear is, is that should they sell or close or whatever, that this now huge parcel of land gets sold to a developer who may not care the way he has taken into consideration putting his building where he has, doing these things? What can you do with this parcel? Should you, should you combine all these parcels to one? Can something be done to stipulate how things can be put on this lot because of its location in the future? Because that doesn't mean some other developer with money couldn't dig up all this retention, all this stuff, and move it around so they could put the building right on top of the Canopkas property and just bring our neighborhood in. It would be horrible. Is, is there ways to do that or are there ways to not split it?
Quickly answer it. Any new development, whether it's an add-on to the existing building, whether it's an accessory structure or whether they tear a thing down and build a new, requires site plan approval and will come to planning and zoning, there'll be public notice about it, come to the Village Board.
But if it's all within code, I mean, the, the current code for commercial property would allow them basically to really infringe upon the neighborhood in a way that these people have not or they have attempted to not, you know?
Simply because a building is within the setbacks doesn't mean the site plan is appropriate for the neighborhood. So the Village does have power over building aesthetics, building location, the footprint of the building within, within a lot, screening, landscaping, fences, all of that, the Village has power to control. The residents would be informed and, you know, I think the Village would...
We would have to go through all of this again?
Yep.
And there's no way to...
Not, not the rezoning, but depending on what the use is, it may be a special use. That would be a public hearing and certainly the site plan would get, looked at critically.
Okay. Could it, could there be special use permits? Should the residential lots remain residential? Special use permits issued? I know it can be done for parking, but I also understand that in their plan, they want to put their underground storage on the lot south of the Canopkas on Richmond. Can it, can a special use permit be issued to allow them to still do that? Just to leave it residential so that we, we are really protected as residents from, you know, it could be ten or fifteen years down the road, Alpha Motors is gone, whatever other businesses are there, then before you know it, we've got a big Home Depot going in, which may sound wonderful for tax dollars. And while the almighty powerful dollar is important to us as a neighborhood, it would, I mean, that would just be horrible. And I understand, we hear everybody talking about all this increased revenue, and while that's great, I, if it affects even one resident, something needs to be considered to protect even that one because that's the right thing to do.
To answer that question, I think the real concern is stormwater. And by consolidating these seven lots, the residential, which would be rezoned if, if it gets approved, and the commercial, they get to engineer this site as a whole and take care of the drainage. Otherwise, they would have to engineer the residential lots separately because they would not be consolidated. The effect, one, would probably be more costly, but, but two, the overall stormwater benefits would not be as great. And honestly, the, the parcel would have, parcels not consolidated would have far less value to any owner and I think would make this project probably less economically feasible for them.
Is it possible for the board to put special restrictions on this parcel just to guarantee the residents something to protect them from future buildings on this particular lot? Is there anything that can be done?
If it gets consolidated, it will be a single lot. Some things that have been done in the past, particularly when there's a special use permit and you are allowed legally to impose special conditions, you can put in a buffer that gets actually recorded against the property, a no-build buffer from residential excluding things like parking lots.
Maybe you guys can consider doing something like that?
That might, may be beyond this board's authority to put a restrictive covenant on the property unless we get the consent of the developer because it's not a special use or planned development. And to restrict, restrict that, which may be in everyone's interest, but maybe pushing the envelope legally a little too far.
Fred, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, Your Honor. In response to the question about leaving the parcels and, and offering special use permits, one of the strengths of this stormwater engineering plan, as John has mentioned, is it does offer a consolidated, unified stormwater engineering plan that maximizes the, the lessening of the stormwater impact. If you do that, then the business fails and you try to sell off those individual lots. How do you, very difficult, it would be extremely difficult to de-engineer this entire parcel and try to segment it into smaller parcels without causing adverse consequences of a stormwater nature to the surrounding neighbors. Staff would strongly advise against that. We, we don't think that's good stormwater planning. It, it's not good planning in a more general sense as well.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Mike Porter. I am a citizen of Westmont. I do not live in the affected area that some of the other people have spoken about. However, I do consider myself a very active and willing and concerned Westmont citizen. So I have a prepared statement. Many of you may know also that I was part of the Westmont Citizens Finance Committee where over six months, we took a very deep look into all the financial things within Westmont. We also looked at long-term planning and a variety of different things. It's during that time that became abundantly clear to me that the best way to accomplish many of the goals of our progressive village would be to increase our sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue makes up a substantial part of our village's income. It's because of this and other things that I am asking that you strongly consider a vote of yes and allowing this to go through. Projects that increase revenue will fund things like street repair, public school fund, funding for student development, property tax reductions, public service funding for police and fire departments and much more. In this case, they are going far beyond just commerce. I applaud the developers for their thoughtful and thorough considerations and compromises. It is the job of our elected officials to make decisions, even tough or unpopular to some, that benefit the majority of all citizens. A decision tonight or Monday to allow for the development of the Westmont... A decision tonight or Monday to allow for the development of the Westmont market will benefit the vast majority of our Westmont citizens. This vote approving development of the Westmont market is a vote for the betterment of Westmont, and I believe the benefit of all Westmont citizens. This is merely the beginning of Westmont realizing its greatness, of becoming the progressive village we all aspire to be. Success breeds success. Create a ripple. I ask that you vote to pass the development of the Westmont market. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Pauline Reynolds. I live in front of the West Suburban Veterinary Clinic. I'm the first house directly facing it, and that is two, S. Two Streets West of Blackhawk. We've worked really well with them, but yes, there's absolutely more traffic, more stop traffic. And the reason I came this evening is to encourage you to put in place more safety features, whether that be speed bumps, chevrons, or some of those ridged grounds, having had many bicycles destroyed and, you know, mailboxes, et cetera. And I have four children, and I am very concerned about my kids, because every day there is traffic. And, you know, with respect to the traffic study, this is a five-year ongoing thing that I've lived, and we have a fantastic relationship, love the vet clinic, but I definitely am concerned about the safety features on Blackhawk with many friends and neighbors there. So please take into consideration whatever safety features that you, you could maybe put in place. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds, what's your address?
519 North Warwick Avenue.
Thank you.
Who asked that? Okay.
My name is Gary Drew. I live at 410 North Richmond. I've met with the partners, you know, they, they walked me through the project. My concerns are the traffic issues. I expressed them with them. They said that they were very willing to work with us on those. The concern is that Richmond, you know, is not as improved as Blackhawk is. We don't have curbs, we don't have sidewalks on our side, you know, so the concern is, and, and the parking, street parking is allowed on the Clarendon Hill side. So what that means is that essentially we end up with a single lane of traffic coming through there, cars jogging around. So what I've expressed to them is that what I'd like to see the village make a commitment to putting sidewalks the entire length of Richmond. I believe that this would certainly at least allow us to walk to our neighbor's house without having to walk across the front lines. As it is right now, we have to cross over to Clarendon Hills to be able to walk along that street with the amount of traffic that's on there now. If we increase the amount of traffic, we need to do something on the Westmont side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment dealing with the sidewalks at this point in time?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, if I could use your expertise for a moment too on this. The village of Westmont has a program, which is called a CMAC program. What this does is every year, we put into place so many miles or sections of this village to have sidewalks put in on properties that don't have sidewalks. As it stands right now, the sidewalks that are going to be done for next year are already programmed. Now, what that leaves us is, then the following year, we could put into the CMAC grant, which we get money back in order to put these improvements in for the village or for the residents of the village. We could in turn look at doing that in the next set of sidewalk improvements. The biggest question that we would have would be of the residents of Richmond Avenue. Is this something that you all feel very strongly about? I mean, that, that's, that's a very crucial part to the sidewalks going down a street, because we've had instances in the past in the village that we have said, look, we can bring in and have sidewalks put in here, but we've had a multitude of residents come in and say, no, we don't want them. We try to do the best we can to take our residents' wishes into play. This being a situation dealing with a safety issue, which we've heard, I've listened to and watched the planning and zoning meetings, myself personally, I think that it would be something that we would want to consider in this program. But then again, I say, it would be a case that I would, I would appreciate or hope that you would talk to your neighbors up and down Richmond and say, look, this is a betterment, this is an improvement to our neighborhood.
No, I certainly would.
It's a, it's a safety issue as well as everything else going along with it. As far as the improvements to the road goes, it's a very costly issue. Right now, as everyone knows, the revenues in a lot of villages and that, in towns and states, we all know the shape we're all in. We don't, we don't really have to go into that. But projects of this, this scale help some of those funding of those projects to get them done. One of the items earlier on the agenda that Public Works, Hidden View, which is south of 55th Street, has had some problems, and we have, it's taken some while to do the engineering that, but for approximately $130,000, we're going to make some major improvements, which are going to help their water issues and improve their, their situation on that. So I wish we had millions and millions of dollars put into all of the streets of this town and increase the infrastructure and, and upgrade it to what it needs to be. We have had numerous numbers, estimates of what it would cost to take care of the entire water issue throughout the entire town as far as the stormwater goes, and those numbers are rather mind-boggling. So we kind of look at different ways to help that problem out by projects, doing the underground storage, and re-engineering properties to withhold more water than what's being dispersed. But back to the sidewalks, I'm sorry, but as far as the sidewalks go, I think that's something that we could take a look at, not this upcoming year, but the following year, which if this project is passed, would coincide with approximately the same time that they would be looking to open their doors.
Yeah, and I certainly think that that's, you know, where this needs to be, because, you know, to, to allow this amount of traffic to be added to our street without having proper sidewalks or some way for the residents of this, you know, neighborhood, essentially, I mean, you know, I, I think we all, when we bought our homes in the neighborhood, and I've been in there for 13 years, it was a sleepy kind of country, you know, feel to the neighborhood. We, I think that we all need to understand that that's changing to some respect, and part of that change would be, and, and part of what, you know, some of the issues that we've talked about as far as whether it's going to increase or decrease the value of our home, I believe, I believe that having sidewalks in front of the house would increase the value of the home from the safety standpoint. If you're going to sell your home and you don't have a sidewalk in front of your home and you've got traffic, you know, racing up and down the street, that's an issue.
Yes, it is. And that's, that's why the, the CMAC program came into place, because as you so eloquently mentioned, which I've talked about numerous times, is where we have sidewalks to nowhere. This was part, this was, this was part of programs when people built a home or did some major remodeling, they were required to put a sidewalk with, in front of their, their property per se. So that's kind of changed to-
I think that was Vince's line.
Yeah. I've, I've used, I've used the phrase quite a while, so, but Steve, could you explain a little bit more?
Thank you.
And I, and actually I needed to add and put something a little bit in perspective. First of all, CMAC is the, the name of the, it's a federal grant program, and we have to compete for those monies the same way all communities in DuPage County do. So far, we only get a, the pattern has been, we've been approved our projects about every other year we've qualified. The roads that, I'm sorry, the sidewalks that you mentioned we're going to be building next year, were actually put in a grant application two years ago. So it's a, it's a, it's a-
A long process.
Very time-consuming process through the, you know, the administrative process. So that is one opportunity, it is the only way we have built sidewalks in, you know, lasts more than 10 years, you know, has been through that program, but that doesn't mean that there aren't, you know, opportunities to do it with, you know, corporate funds or anything like that. So we, at a minimum, we can estimate, you know, what its value would be and, and decide together if you want to proceed, and they, you mentioned, they always look for consensus in the neighborhood, you know, to make sure that it's, you know, wanted. So, you know, that process can begin anytime, but the, that particular program-
Takes a long time.
Isn't quick.
Right.
Steve, don't we have like a 50-50 program, where if the people put in half the money, then we try to put in the other half? We could try to work-
We have that program, but that program is sidewalk repair and replacement-
Let's only do repair and replacements.
For ones that are non-hazardous. So it's to, it's to take care of minor defects and aesthetic issues with existing sidewalks, so.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that's how the existing program has worked. Thank you.
So in essence-
I'm sorry, to remind the people, they need 51% of people who want it, or 51% who say no, because that's where the program went to a dead stop in this one subdivision. We, we just always went in and said, this is the area, we're going to do sidewalks on this side of the street. And all of a sudden, people came in with a petition and said, we don't want them in our neighborhood. And so all of a sudden, now we're at a point where we actually ask the people, you know, get 51% yes or 51% no, so we know whether we're going to come in. So if the people in there want it, let's get a petition signed, get 51%, and then we can try to get you on a list for sidewalks.
So it is in fact something we could put into our long-term plan, if the residents desire to have that, rest of them in their, in their area.
Okay.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Ray Knopka. I live at 512 North Richmond. My only concern is privacy. This fence we're talking about is 13 feet from my house. My bedrooms, my grandchildren are on that side of the house, and my understanding at the beginning of this, that these 20, in this 21 parking spots, they were asked if they could be eliminated, because their, their 21 parking space is over what's required, which would give us a 40-foot buffer. If that's not acceptable, then my question is that can they move this fence from the 13 feet to the 22-foot and put the trees on this side of the fence? Is my question there for this. So it would give me more of a, a buffer zone than this 13-foot. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Mike Lonnie. I live at 514 Blackhawk Drive, and I had sent you all an email and appreciate the responses, especially from Trustee Scott. So I won't go through any of that stuff. The only thing I wanted to talk about, I think Trustee Forsley had, had made a comment about, it was dangerous to have an entrance and exit on Ogden Avenue, and I don't see how that'd be any more dangerous than the other entrance or exit on Ogden or the Jewel entrance and exit on Cass Avenue, which is about the same distance from a lighted cross-section, crossway. So my view, like I said, it makes more sense to have an entrance and exit on, on Ogden than it does on Blackhawk Drive. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, I'm Jean Donald, and we live on Richmond at 318. And I wanted to bring to your attention the concerns we've all talked about with traffic. I'm at the other end of Richmond near Chicago Road. There are small children in the neighborhood, as we've said, but unfortunately for us, they're not right next door, they're across the street. The six-year-olds cross to see each other, they have supervision. The day somebody runs out after a ball, I've got a different story. My daughter's biggest concern about my granddaughter is that she does not become a speed bump. I mentioned this at the last meeting, I'm bringing it up again. So my question to everyone here tonight is, what can we do to slow the traffic or remove it from Richmond? And my request would be, can we have a turn directly out of the store going only right? Wait, let me get this correct. Left toward Ogden, when you come out of the store on Richmond. Right on Blackhawk toward Ogden. Currently, just so everyone is aware, there are three entrances from Ogden onto the properties that we're talking about. Can those be used instead? I thought there were two, there's actually three. There's the one where the muscle shop is right now, and there are two cuts already there that are in use on Old Plank Road property. So I'm wondering if we can use those, keeping as much of the traffic as possible off of Blackhawk and Richmond. And we all do acknowledge, traffic is going to come down Chicago Road from other communities. We welcome their tax dollars, we welcome their kindly coming to our neighbor, or to our stores. However, we prefer they not drive down those particular residential streets. So we're asking, can we put in speed bumps? I believe in Chicago and the Beverly neighborhoods, they have circles or turn areas at the intersections. We have a couple on the way up there toward the stores. Can we somehow slow or remove that flow of traffic that doesn't belong in the neighborhood itself? And that's our request. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tim Upkin with 507 Blackhawk Drive. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I've mentioned at previous planning and zoning commission meetings and also in speaking with a number of you this last week, that I welcome the business of this community. You can't argue the jobs and tax revenue. That's really not the issue that the residents are concerned about. You know, the main issues all along have been the increased traffic, the water issues, as well as the incursion to our neighborhood, and many of those haven't been addressed. Like I said, we're not arguing about the tax revenue. From day one, the residents on Blackhawk and Richmond have said, we don't want these entrance and exits on our residential streets. Now, I'm just going to focus on Blackhawk at this point, no offense to my Richmond folks, but, and I've actually gotten to know my neighbors very well in these last months and many of my friends in Richmond, so I'm not taking offense to any of you, but what have they actually done to address the traffic issues on Blackhawk? Not until the last planning and zoning commission, when Commissioner Anton actually made the recommendation that they put an entrance on Ogden, did they actually do something to address the issue. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Anton and tell him he can drive his truck past my house anytime, because I know he likes to drive his truck around. So, you know, until that suggestion, they actually did nothing to address the trafficking of Blackhawk. Is it a step in the right direction? Definitely. Is that the final thing? I don't think so. I think more needs to be done. You know, they, they referenced a meeting that they had on Tuesday, and I welcomed that meeting. I guess one thing I'd say is that meeting was long overdue. My wife and I live four houses from that proposed entrance on Blackhawk and Richmond. We at no point received a flyer for this earlier meeting at the library. We were at no point contacted and had no idea about these plans until the first planning and zoning commission. And when I first heard about the plans for, for a store there, I actually thought, great, until we all found out the entrance and exits were going to be on Blackhawk and Richmond. That's where it became a different issue for us. So, you know, at this, prior to this meeting on Tuesday, actually last Friday, my wife had called Mr. Priest and had asked him if he was willing to make additional concessions on traffic issues for Blackhawk. And actually, he very clearly told my wife, no, we're done making concessions on Blackhawk in regards to traffic. Now, that was very discouraging to me, because I thought they were trying to reach out and make some consensus with the neighbors. I still went to the meeting on Tuesday, and my main issue was traffic. So I, whether or not they wanted to discuss it, that's what I was going to discuss. And I actually had made a suggestion, and, and please excuse my drawing, because I was never good at art here. So basically, my drawing is right here. What I'm proposing is please consider an entrance, only a right-turn entrance off Blackhawk, as well as a right-turn exit out of Blackhawk. Now, so basically restricting left turns both ways. That has a number of advantages. You know, and, and I guess the first thing I'll say is that, you know, originally, we had said we only wanted a right turn out of the lot. The developers had said, hey, we can't do that, we need the traffic coming from Chicago, and it's already going, going on Blackhawk. Understand their concern, so therefore, let's make a right turn only into the lot as well. So we gave, at least my, my, my drawing here, I'm willing to give on that one. We still don't want the entrance and exits on Blackhawk and Richmond, but I'm willing to compromise and make some concessions. So number one, it helps them. Number two, it keeps the residential traffic actually out of the neighborhood, which actually appeals to the neighbors. It also restricts left turns. We all know that left turns cause backup on traffic. You know, whether there's two or three cars turning left, it's actually going to cause a backup either way. So left, restricting left turns actually keeps the traffic moving. And I think the last two advantages to this plan is something that these developers have not addressed in anything they've said. Currently, if we actually kind of go up here, you can't see it too well, but their proposed driveway is actually going to be directly across from 514 Blackhawk as well as 516 Blackhawk. Those people are going to have a nightmare getting in and out of their driveway. Yes, they've talked to the Lonnies about changing their driveway, but that's- Yes, they've talked to the Lonnies about changing their driveway, but that's not satisfactory. That's an accident waiting to happen with these cars turning left at that intersection. So that addresses that issue, if you restrict the left turns. And I think the other issue is that the headlights going into these houses. If they make left turns, those headlights are going to go into 514 Blackhawk. As they turn left, I'm getting the warning, I'll scrub up here, they're going to turn into 512 Blackhawk, as well as 510. Restricting the left turns actually takes care of that issue. And I won't explain, I'm sure they'll get up and explain why. I think the big things they say is that you're going to restrict traffic, it's going to be inconvenience. I don't disagree with that. But my wife and I use the veterinary clinic in Warwick. It's an inconvenience for us to turn left to Blackhawk, I mean, to Ogden. Do we do it? Yes. Inconvenience? Do we not go there? No, we still go there. Last point I'll make, because I know I'm out of time here, is that you already have put restrictions on three other businesses in this neighborhood. Why is this business so special that they wouldn't have those same restrictions? And just one month ago, this very board put a restriction on a business about two hundred feet closer to Ogden than this business. All I'm asking is for fair and equal treatment, and doing the same thing for this business. Thank you.
I think the other left turn restrictions were auto dealers, where the board restricted test drives of, basically, employees of those businesses, not restricting customers.
Mary Robertson Iverson, you all know me. 320 North Warwick. I'm going to bring a different perspective, because I'm not in the immediately affected area, but Warwick Avenue has been affected in pretty much the same exact way in the past. And I just wanted to share with you, although most of you are aware of what has happened in our history, when we got into these exact type of situations. On Warwick, we are right now still dealing with a spot or slash contract zoning type of thing. We have excessive traffic flow from Jewel. Jewel's very successful, and Warwick is in the rottenest condition it ever has been, because of the amount of traffic. We do have unresolved flooding issues, and the intensity is increasing, as well as the frequency, but you're all aware of it. And we do have some homes that are dealing with lack of proper buffering between residential and commercial district. If I could share here, for the sake of it, I go on Wikipedia whenever I want to learn a term. Contract zoning, and by all means, any lawyers want to jump in and help me out here, because I'm not a lawyer. But contract zoning occurs when a local zoning authority accommodates a private interest by rezoning a district or parcel of land within that district. I believe that is kind of what's happening here, from your packet, page twenty-five. You can see there's clearly a line that shows the difference between the B2 and R3. For the sake of an auto dealership that wanted to come onto Ogden, West Suburban Veterinary was moved over here. This is a case of a contract zoning, is it not?
If we went to the developers and said, "Pay us $50,000 and we'll rezone that property for you," that's contract zoning.
Money has to exchange, or just the use?
It's not the use. The rezoning property happens every day in every community. We're going through the public hearing process to determine whether it's appropriate, using the factors set out by Illinois courts, which is the LaSalle Sinclair pipeline factors, and I can go through those with you if you want. Contract zoning is when you exact a promise from the developer, whether it's cash or a unique benefit, that they're not otherwise providing in exchange for zoning. It's illegal to contract zone.
Right.
This is not illegal zoning if the board chooses to rezone the property. It may not be popular with some of the residents nearby, but it's not illegal contract zoning.
Okay, so then I'm using the wrong term. Maybe it's closer to spot zoning?
Well, it's not spot zoning either, because the B2 zoning, the rezoning of those residential parcels would be immediately adjacent to other B2 zoning, so it's consistent with nearby zoning. It's simply whether it's a good fit or not. I think that's the question.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks for the correction there. In the packet also, on page twenty-seven, it says that the applicant has been encouraged, I'm assuming that's by village staff, to treat this development as one whole project. I like, personally, I like what is the paragraph below, that the developer could, in fact, go through with the project just by using those two other lots as, leaving them as residential. I'm one of those people that's very touchy about when commercials starts encroaching into a residential area. As all of you have known, you know, you've been to my home, you know what happened at ninety-eight North, or, I'm sorry, ninety-eight East Naperville Road back in nineteen sixty-seven, when Pick 'n Save came in, the little grocery store. We were still under the county. We had no choice in the matter. The village did an annexing, and also a rezoning of the two lots that came down Warwick, so that Pick 'n Save could come in. They came, they were going to give a, the developers were going to give a nice, large project that was something that the village wanted. And then it, for whatever reason, they didn't go with the original project that was supposed to be on the two parcels. Instead, they only developed the one parcel, leaving the other parcel undeveloped, as far as a grocery store. That grocery store looks like this today. Once Jewel came in, and the grocery store went under, this, as you know, wound up going up, second floor. It's now, if I understand correctly, being leased for different, for a variety of businesses. As you can see here with these guys loading and unloading, we get a lot of truck traffic back there. Then, after the parcel, or after the five-year agreement ran out with the village as far as to what was supposed to go on the second lot, a developer came in, put up thirty-two units. I know you're all aware of this, but I'm trying to share this with-
Mary, could you hurry up? You're way over your time limit already, that we've allotted.
Okay.
If you could hurry up with your presentation, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, well, then I will go much faster here. So anyways, I'm just trying to show what can happen once we get into zoning, something, changing a zoning that was once residential, and what the neighbors, the immediate neighbors could potentially be putting up with. I still do have questions on the flooding that we are seeing on Warwick Avenue. At the last meeting, I asked, and maybe Steve can answer the question, are there any storm sewers on Ogden Avenue that this project could be hooking up into, rather than hooking up to us?
This was addressed at the public hearing. There is a storm sewer on Ogden-
Okay.
-that is actually closer than what the developers are tying into, but it's undersized and doesn't have the capacity to handle this. So they're extending their line down to the Trowby Storm Sewer, which has capacity.
All right. Because there is a storm sewer on Ogden, it's undersized. Okay, so, I'm very-
There's a lot more to it than that, but essentially, it's not available, and it's a different tributary direction.
I'm very, very concerned, well, I'm not going to share all these pictures then with you, since my time, but we are under, we're supposed to be doing this study of the whole Trowby area, as well as the Warwick area, to find out why this flooding is going on. Does it make any sense to tap into a line that is, that we haven't even studied yet? We don't even know what's going to happen once Walgreens is up and running. You know, we don't know what their water is going to be contributing. I have no problem with this business, as far as, it's a, it would be a beautiful addition to our village. That's my personal feeling. But with all the hoops that we have to jump through here, I'm wondering if this is just a case of, it's a great business, but wrong location. It needs more room, somewhere where it's not going to encroach in on the neighborhood, and maybe possibly, we, none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know what the water runoff's going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Svetak, and I do live in the affected area. That's Westmont. And while I may not live within several blocks of the business, I live probably about a mile west. And I think the developers and the village have done a wonderful job, and I look forward to patronizing them. Stormwater issues, while I don't live in the immediate neighborhood, I felt those back in the seventies, in the neighborhood that I've lived in, and the problem has been resolved. Traffic. I live right down the street from an elementary school. A lot of traffic over there. You know, there comes a point in time that, while you may not like it, you've got to live with it. I think the developer is taking several properties that are an eyesore, not only here in Westmont, but with the relocation of the Car X into Downers Grove, and the redevelopment of an eyesore in Downers Grove. So, this developer has a big commitment, and like I said before, I look forward to seeing them open by Easter.
Next.
I'm Jane Grinning. My husband and I live at 510, so we're right in the vicinity of all the action. We're, we like the idea of the business, and forgive me if I'm reiterating things that people have already said, but this is our time to talk. The safety is a big issue, there's no doubt about it, but something that really bothers me is, some of my neighbors, the concessions that they're going to have to make to have this happen, to my neighbors that they're going to put in a turnaround area. Their front yard has now become all concrete. They have no front yard anymore. To my neighbors directly north, they're going to have the lights in their living room every night. And we might too, but definitely, they will. And I don't have any fancy figures and studies, anything like that, but that's not how we treat people. And you have to know in your heart, that's the wrong thing to do. Do not let them enter and exit on Blackhawk or Richmond. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John Kerish, 508 Blackhawk. Just a couple of things I wanted to address. It's a good project, and I've gotten to know some of the developers here, and they seem like really good folks, and the board has been very receptive, so we really appreciate that. It just, the right turn only out of Blackhawk, if you really need to consider that. I don't know if there's other options down the road to maybe monitor it. If there is, if the numbers aren't correct, maybe that's something that could be looked at. The lot consolidation, you know, I wasn't going to talk about that this evening, but I think it was Kim, I think she brought up a good point. With, down the road, you know, this is a good project, I hope it goes and stays, but with this consolidation, and if these other businesses in the area, say Alpha Motors or the Body Shops there, go out, you have a very large parcel of property that is going to be open to, say, you know, like a Home Depot style or Lowe's. So that's why I urge you, I know we can't do anything for the future, but what we can't do is not allow the lot consolidation. Now, I realize that does put on some, you know, extra costs probably to them to develop each parcel for water retention, et cetera, but that may be something we should entertain, so. And like a speed monitor, I think you saw the sign that they had shown there, that might be something good now, even before this project goes, because sometimes Blackhawk's busy. But anyway, that's all I want to share this evening, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Malord, and I recently moved into town, and I just wanted to say that I am fully in favor of the Westmont market. I think it'll be a tremendous asset to the town. I think it'll be an exceptional improvement to the existing site. And I think what Vince Priest and his partners have proposed is that it's going to be truly an exceptional and outstanding facility, so that I hope that you all vote for it, and approve it as soon as possible. Thank you.
And what's your address?
My address is 529 Ryan Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to thank you for allowing us to speak and hear us. My concern has been the traffic on Blackhawk. Specifically, if they're coming on Trowby and Blackhawk, and heading towards the light, they like to speed and try to hit that light. My concern is just to protect our residents and the customers too, because if they're making a left-hand turn out of the grocery store, and a car's racing to hit the light, that could be a potential accident. And so whatever we can do to help prevent that, greatly appreciated. Also, for the residents going, once they leave the store, if they are going to be allowed to make left-hand turn out of there, what can we do from Trowby all the way down to Chicago Avenue or Naperville? Because then they'll get some speed, and that causes an issue. So that's why I recommended those speed monitors, or radar guns, or something to help. I don't have all the answers, but let's try to be thinking out of the box and come up with a solution, so that we can keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carrie Brugel. I live on 507 Blackhawk. I crossed out a lot of the things that other people have said, but a few of the things I do have to say are repeats, but I feel so strongly about them, I would really like to have the opportunity to speak about them. Over the last few weeks, in person, by phone, and in writing, Blackhawk residents have expressed concerns about the damage this plan will have on the safety of our street and our property values. Over one hundred neighborhood residents signed the petition opposing this project. The builders have met with us, but they have been unwilling to discuss ways to decrease traffic on Blackhawk. Fifty-five percent of traffic deaths are on residential streets. Routing commercial traffic onto a residential street is an accident waiting to happen. Allowing the entrance and exit on Blackhawk will increase the traffic on this already busy street. I'm actually going to reference some of the numbers that were provided by the traffic study by the builders. According to their study, about three thousand cars go down Blackhawk every day, and about one thousand cars go down Richmond. As far as dispersion of traffic, I also found that really interesting, because the way we're looking at it is the traffic that should be on Commercial Street is actually being dispersed onto our residential streets. And I'm not sure if that's what the dispersion theory was designed to do. And with all due respect to Mr. Kimball, he noted that the traffic would be, the goal was to have the traffic equally dispersed on Blackhawk and Richmond, but according to the study done by the builders, three-quarters of the traffic going south is going to be on Blackhawk, and only a quarter will be on Richmond. So that isn't an equal dispersion either. The appraisal journal notes that an appraiser should consider the traffic effect when valuing residential property, and the effect is a negative one, with the detracting effects of increased traffic, odor, noise, dust, and danger, outweighing any positive effects. Yes, it seems these builders have been pretty good about offering landscaping solutions, and they have made some other concessions. and they have made some other concessions. And this is not a personal attack on them at all, but the increase of traffic on Blackhawk has not been adequately addressed. We would like the same quality of life, safety, and protection of our investment that other Westmont neighborhoods are afforded. We are Westmont residents, taxpayers, and voters and we shouldn't be afforded any less. This business should be welcomed into our city, we have no problem with that, but common sense and courtesy dictate that the safety and integrity of our residential streets should also be protected. Our preference is to have an entrance and exit on Ogden, both an entrance and an exit. They've added an entrance, we would like to have an entrance and exit. If this project goes forward, the very least that should be done for the residents on Blackhawk is to restrict access to right turn only. It would be inconsistent with prior restrictions placed on nearby businesses if you do not go forward with this restriction. And I support with the woman that lives on Richmond, she wanted a left turn only on Richmond as well, I support her in that as well. As you very well know, the decision you make on this project is not in a vacuum. All Westmont residents should realize they aren't safe from commercial rezoning and commercial traffic being routed through their neighborhoods. You would be opening Pandora's Box and we all know how that turned out. We care about the city of Westmont. We make it a point to try and shop and dine here and bring revenue into our city and support our business community. It is now time for Westmont to care about us. Put yourself in our shoes. If you wouldn't want this type of commercial rezoning and increased traffic in your neighborhood, then support the right turn only on Blackhawk. When considering this unprecedented commercial rezoning of a residential area, we are asking for very little. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim Addington, 337 East Trabi. I'm about 600 feet from where this project is going to go in and I'm not going to go over a lot of the things that were said. Somehow I got elected or volunteered by Greg Pill as the block captain in this thing to help coordinate things. The one thing I want to stress is that these folks, the developers, are decent people. I think that there's not one person in Northeast Acres that's against these people coming into town at all. The concern is not the development, the concern is traffic and safety and that's the real bottom line to this thing. Unfortunately, we have made some suggestions, you've heard some suggestions tonight, and the developers have said that those are deal busters for them. I still think that our children are still the issue here. Just in the six homes that surround my house, the three across the street and my neighbors on each side, there are 14 grammar school and preschool children, right there at the corner of Richmond and Trabi. So they're affected by this and they're affected by the traffic and we ask you just to consider our children as this thing goes forward. And let's get them in town, but let's get them done the right way so it doesn't hurt us in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Larry Forsberg, Westmont Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, at 1 South Cass Avenue. Have a written statement I'd like to read from, on behalf of the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. The Westmont Chamber is in support of the Westmont market. We support this because of the economic development factors that come to play with this type of development in town. After all, the success of Westmont is linked also to the success of the business community and it's the strong belief of the Westmont Chamber that we can need to do whatever we can possibly do to strengthen our business community. Chamber President Lorraine DeBrix and I were at the Planning and Zoning Committee meetings in October and November and we sat through those and listened not only to the presentation from the developers, but to the comments from the general public. We shared those with our Board of Directors. I also had conversations with past Chamber Board members such as Roger Wespin, Ms. Beller, Barbara Lasswell, Frank Brady, and all those former Chamber Board Presidents who are very active in our community spoke in favor of this project also. But it gave us a good firsthand insight as to what was being proposed here and the Chamber Board really supports what's being proposed. And there's six key areas that we would like to touch on that we feel really enhance the economic development aspects. First, the Westmont market is going to create approximately 120 jobs and if anybody was paying attention to the recent elections, jobs was one of the number one things that was being talked about. Hundred and twenty jobs coming to our community is huge and I don't think there's any way we can overlook the value of that in terms of the economic viability of our community. Secondly, the Westmont market is anticipated to generate between $200,000 to $300,000 in sales tax revenue. Again, that goes to support all the infrastructure, police, fire, public works, all the things that we need to provide to our citizens on a daily basis and those are important services and this helps to provide support to that. Third, the new Westmont market will result in a beautification of that site. We saw some pictures earlier this evening of what that site looks like. You saw some renderings of what the site will look like if this development goes forward and I don't think anybody can argue that it's a beautiful addition to the community. It'll enhance the overall look of Ogden Avenue, really be a first-class building on that site. Fourth, the Westmont market will serve as an ambassador to our community. We feel that this unique proposition will draw residents not only from Westmont, from all the surrounding communities, which will increase sales tax dollars and create a positive buzz about what we're doing here in the community. Fifth, the infrastructure enhancement, I won't go into much detail on this because I think we've kind of gone through this, what we're doing with the stormwater enhancements that will go on there that will really be a positive enhancement to the community and help reduce some of the flooding concerns, which does have an adverse impact on the property values. I think some of the comments that Fred Kimball provided earlier, we echo the support of each and every one of those points from discussions we had at the Chamber Board level. Sixth, and certainly not last, but when it comes to development in a community, especially in this economy, anything we can do to maintain momentum is critical. We need to be known as a community where a developer can come and be open to discussions and open to development. I mean, in the last several months, we've seen new businesses downtown. We've recently opened a new business on 63rd Street, the Westmont Yard Indoor Sports Complex. We have a new Walgreens coming to Cass and Ogden Avenue. We have three car dealers, Mercedes-Benz, BMW, Audi, they're all going through expansions and I think the Westmont market is just another great addition in maintaining and strengthening that momentum for development in our community and really making us a progressive community that we say that we are. So in closing, you know, keep those economic development factors in mind. They are all great positive reasons why the Westmont market should be here. The Westmont Chamber is in great support of this project and we'd love to see it happen and we see it as just another opportunity to encourage people to shop, dine, and discover Westmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments from board members?
Well, I've been taking notes. My comments will be a little disjointed, I apologize for that, but based on concerns that were raised, you know, I've been sitting here trying to put them in some logical order so, but they're really not, so bear with me. Carrie, I don't want to butcher your last name, Ms. Brugel?
Brugel.
Brugel. You said, "Put yourself in our shoes." I have been in your shoes. The reason that Chairman Richard knows me is because I spent a lot of time as an unwanted face at planning and zoning. Reason every person on this board knew me when I ran for this board is because I spent a lot of time in your shoes. Except for Trustee Seneca who happens to live right around the corner from me. Things grow and things change. When I spoke to Tim last night, I told him, I said, you know, I grew up three houses from Ogden on Mid-Au and Clarendon Hills, which is across from what is now Pasquen Alley Drive. And when I grew up there, it was Healy Farm. There was no Oakwood, there was no Pasquen Alley Drive, there was no Office Park, there was no Strip Mall, there was no Best Western, and there certainly wasn't a mobile station. And I remember when Healy Farm was sold and it was going to be commercially developed and that was a huge piece of property going all the way to 31st Street from 83 almost to Cass. I look back many years ago and I can say, because I walked the walk, that I lived in Chicken Little's house. Mobile was going to light the northern sky and it was going to destroy all of our housing values, let alone when, God forbid, the Strip Mall went in and Pasquen Alley Drive. Looking back on it, life didn't change. The traffic didn't change. Little bit more, but not much, because Ogden Avenue being a major commercial street and a major commercial corridor in DuPage County. Where I live now, it's faster for me to jog to 83 to Ogden to go to Jewel than it is to go Cass. I think in this instance, this is probably one of those very few exceptions to the congestion on Cass actually helps you. Because a lot of people don't want to deal with Cass, they don't want to deal with the side streets, they certainly don't want to deal with what the village did with stop signs like along Richmond and put them at every single corner and every single corner on Lincoln to slow down traffic, okay? Like I say, it's easier to go down Ogden to 83 to 63rd and back to Cass. We're going to get a lot of people from Oakbrook. We're going to get a lot of people from Downers, from Hinsdale, if this project goes in. Southwest Mont, a lot of people frequent Whole Foods. And I think that, and I'm not discounting anything you say and I'm not belittling it, but, and I will assure you that we will be watching the traffic if this project is approved. We have to. The underground detention and stormwater management, I learned a lot about it when my friend, Mr. Kimball, wanted to put a Meyer in my backyard and in Susanica's backyard. And when this village wanted to put a Lowe's back there, I walked in your shoes.
I'd forget the waste transfer station.
And the waste transfer station, which was abused.
That was really a waste.
Yeah, there was, you know, that's in a whole different category. So when I hear geared toward neighborhood friendliness with the presentation and from what I hear, they actually ended up selling me on a Lowe's in my backyard, because what this board did, and I understand your concerns about the future and all this, is planning and zoning under Chairman Richard's direction and this board, who had one different member at the time, every single obstacle and every single concern that we had and every obstacle we threw in their path, they addressed. We were worried about flooding and there was going to be underground stormwater detention and because I've worked with Christopher Burke on other projects in other municipalities, I got to call him up and go, you know, am I being handed a bill of goods? Underground detention is phenomenal and Mary Robertson Iverson's concerns about tapping into a sewer, when there's underground detention to the size that this project is going to have if approved, is going to be, I'd pretty much bet the farm that there is going to be noticeable, noticeable on heavy rains. It's going to be, where's the water? It's, you know, it's coming down an inch an hour, where's the water? Guess where it's going to be? Under Westmont Market. So, having grown up along a major commercial corridor, I think one of the things that, if you're interested, you may want to look at, is when Wild Oats went into Hinsdale. It used to be the Cypress Restaurant and when Wild Oats was going to take over and build a huge parcel, there was this type of thing going on in Hinsdale. It ended it up that the property values were not devalued and I can tell you that my mom and dad's house, three houses from Ogden, across from Healy Farm, they built in 1962 for $40,000. They moved out of it in 2002 and sold it for half a million and their whole block from Ogden to what is Naperville Road in Clarendon Hills, because it's a short, you know, Naperville goes at an angle, there are only four houses, original houses left and every single other house has sold for over a million dollars, that close to Ogden and the Mobile and Pasquen Alley Drive. So knowing that you buy at any time close to a major commercial corridor, you know that there could be development. And I would rather see this type of development than if you're watching Naperville at all, if Show Me decides to swing their turret east, I would hate to see them put their eye on this parcel of property, so that then we're dealing with, what are we going to do with all the drunks at 2:00 in the morning and, you know, girls wearing, you know, half-naked clothes and our kids are running around and all the little boys are hanging out in the parking lot to watch them come to work. I don't want to see that and I don't want to see anything like it and I don't want to see any more Car-X mufflers. Those of you who follow the meetings know how much I didn't like the $3 car wash signs. I thought they were tacky, I still do. Everything about this project says, we're thinking green, we're thinking about how things are supposed to be for the future and that includes development. What sits there now is, no doubt about it, but ugly. And so, you know, you can tell where I'm going with my vote and I assure you, I'm going to be looking at the traffic. If there's traffic problems, if there's, you know, what are the counts? I want to know, because obviously you have little kids in your neighborhood, we all do, and that's a big, big concern, you know. Many times I said to this board, you don't understand, if you put a Meyer in behind me, all the traffic will come past all my little kids. And they addressed all that and said, we'll watch it, we promise, and I took them at their word. What I haven't heard and I'm surprised about, I'm really surprised, is I haven't heard one word about the increase from the people who lived on Blackhawk before and after Ty Warner Park. If anything would have blown traffic off the charts on Blackhawk, would have been the construction of Ty Warner Park. But I guess we all lived through that and through that traffic. So, you know, I mean, people who've lived there a long time, I'm sure you've seen an increase, but it's manageable. I do agree with Mr. Kimball that the turns, if you turn right out right onto Blackhawk only, they'll just zoom around the front and go back the other way. It's a false hope that it will lower traffic. I don't believe that. I do think that if we put this in, the village does have a duty and all of us on this board have a duty to do what we can. We know through other things that speed platforms, you know, those speed tables and speed bumps tear up our plows and they really, you know, we have difficulty with them with our equipment, but I certainly have no aversion to a stop sign on every single intersection. Nothing slows people down like that. So basically, there's things that you haven't thought of, which, you know, if they come that we will address them, that we raised with, where I live, with the Myers and the Lowe's, like no semis idling at 6:00 in the morning. Semis are only allowed in at a certain time. I mean, things you haven't thought of, we will, we will address, so that you don't have to cross a bridge and go, how do to cross a bridge and go, how did this happen? But that's about all I can tell you, other than I would hope that, and I know the logistics of this and moving, you know, fresh goods, that you will try for locally grown in season versus flying everything in. That's always a good thing because we have ties to locally grown produce here in Westmont. And I think we give it a shot because right now the alternatives are businesses that nobody wants to see come in there, period. So, that's all I have to say.
Comment some other board members?
Well, I'm not sure that, hopefully that Show Me's doesn't have their sights on us. What if we look what's going on in 10 miles in either direction? No one's got the construction that Westmont has, so we're a target. If we see what's happening over by the Mayflower Motel in that area there, it's getting knocked down, there's a dealer coming out of Lisle, moving into Claritin Hills. You don't see dealers move out of one town into another town too often. You'll see them open up another one, but to completely move there? For that, you know, it's a shame that it's not in Westmont, but to get rid of the Mayflower Motel, which was the armpit of Claritin Hills? You know, that's a great thing. But what else could it possibly bring to that property? And I guess that's the other issue. If it's not these guys, what could it possibly be? I can only think it's going to be another dealer because that's what we seem to attract. And we've got all our eggs in one basket, as have seen in some of the towns which had American car dealers, that they're floundering right now. We were very fortunate to have high-end foreign car dealers where there was still a market. Yeah, they're down, but they're not as down as some of the American car dealers and for us, we're grateful for that. So, do you have another developer that comes in now and we don't get what this one brings? Will they put the property, the building on the back end of the property and then all the cars in the front? So where are the, the buildings back there, the mechanics are back there, the unloading, which we would have to put up with somewhere? It's a, is it an alternative if these guys leave? That's what the alternative could very well be. Or it stays empty for a while, which I can't imagine that's going to happen with us being looked at so heavily right now. Can there be still some other issues worked out? Yeah, I think so. I think, you brought up the issue of revisiting or looking at the traffic issue. Let's say the traffic counts are wrong. Let's say they triple or quadruple, double what they're saying, even if it's a, they did their studies on a 60,000 square foot store. That's something the village has to take seriously and to consider. At that point, we have to sit there and say, yeah, this isn't working out for us and we're going to have to work with the developers to sit there and if they've got that much business, I don't think it's going to make any difference if we make some changes at that point. You know, I've got four women that live in my house. And when you talk about a shopping experience, they'll go 20 miles in a stone storm with a flat tire to get there. So, you know, how they get there? It doesn't make any difference. You know, the, the good women of Claritin Hills and Hinsdale put through, go through all that traffic on Route 83, 22nd Street to get to Oakbrook. They do the same thing to get to Yorktown. And there's been a trustee in this village who's been known to go to Long Grove. So, to travel there, people will do it. You know, it's like that thing, you build it, they will come. This is absolutely the best thing that's happened to Westmont. It really is. Can we do a little bit more work? I hope so. I hope we can tweak it. And if, and if this is the best we've got, then I think this board has to give the commitment that we have to look at the traffic in six months and we look at it in a year and if there are some issues, then we have to address them. And these guys have to know that. And if there's issues with traffic because they've got so much, changing something is not going to lose them any business because it's a unique store that they're going to come to anyhow. I think that's all I've got for right now.
You know, just, just a couple of things. And Mr. Porter, I think, really touched on it. You know, we're tasked to represent the entire village and sometimes in your heart, that's hard because we're also tasked to listen to the residents. And I'd like to think that we always do. And I would especially like to say thank you for everyone who emailed. I know I've had a lot of good email exchanges with many of you, many phone calls. I've run into a few of you here and there, not with the car, not on the street, but had opportunities to talk to you and, and we very much appreciate that input. It's not always easy, but we do have to look at the entire town. Many of you made comments, well, you know, we voted you in and we, you know, we put you in and, and yes, you did elect us to do exactly that. Think of the entire community. Often we have to make choices that aren't always popular in every area of the town. But I, in my heart, this is a good project for our community. And, you know, two years from now, five years from now, you know, we will really see the benefits of this. And, and we're very fortunate, I can't believe our good fortune, that this fine organization chose Westmont. You know, Ogden Avenue is a long street, so, so we're very, very lucky. Just to kind of go another note, someone sent an email and forgive me, I can't remember which resident it was from, might have been Mr. Lonnie, with a suggestion of signage as you pull out of the parking lot on Richmond and on Blackhawk. Simple signage that says things like, you know, watch for pedestrians. You know, just things that would maybe enhance the safety a little bit, reminders that this is a residential area. And, you know, I think that's something we could pursue with the petitioner and I'm sure they'd be more than willing to, to do some nice friendly signage saying, you know, this is a neighborhood, please, you know, be respectful of it.
You know, there's one thing I did, wanted to touch on and I'd forgotten about it, was District 201. For you that've got kids in the district or have been watching for the last couple of years what's going on, they're in dire straits. They cut $500,000 out of budget last year and they're going to cut another eight, or try to cut another $800,000 out this time, this year. If we don't get a project like this or similar to it, and try to do something to increase where the property values will go up for that project and then that'll help go to the schools, if we don't do that, it won't make any difference about property values because if our schools take a dump, so do the property values. That is what drives a town or the schools. People want to come to a town where the schools are good. And if we can't provide for that, whether this is a, you know, a good situation with getting out on Blackhawk and getting out on Richmond, the issue is it won't make any difference if all our values in District 201 go down because the schools aren't doing well. This is imperative to help them in that right direction. I'm finished.
Well, just throwing my two cents into the hopper, I've, I've lived in this village for over 26 years. In the first 17 years that I lived in this village, I lived on North Grant, right at Grant in Chicago. So I'm familiar with your all's traffic and I had to contend with at 5:00 at night trying to back out of my driveway was not easy to do. I also had to dodge the county's pizza trucks as they came flying through and for many, many years, we had no sidewalks at all on our street. And at one point when we went and asked for the sidewalks, we were alluded to, well, we hadn't really paid our dues, that we had to wait. Now, this goes back many years. Couple of the things that transpired, just as a little background, the reason I got involved in this village is because I found out a particular ordinance was going to change and I already had plans drawn up for in addition to my home, changing the setbacks. That's how I got involved. I got involved in planning and zoning, then I got involved with the board and a lot of you know that I've been on the board for a while. I'm very passionate about the residents of this village and what goes on in this village. Traffic unfortunately coming off of Ogden Avenue, be it starting at our westernmost border, going to our easternmost border, any given night, people find a way to get around Cass Avenue, cut through to Chicago, cut all the way down through. I've seen it for more years than I can think. Now, one would think, because I was in that situation, why would I then move to Washington and 55th right on the corner? Go figure. But I can, I, I just, I have to look at the overall value of this project going forward. The only thing that I can say to you as residents, that all considerations are taken into play. We don't make knee jerk reactions. We don't just brush things aside. You have, you have a group of people here above and beyond a lot of villages and towns around you that we care. Whereas I think if you go to some other village board meetings and that, this evening, they would have not allowed you all to speak. There are a lot of villages that are like that on their committee of the holes. We try to be a very friendly village and we try to respect all of our residents' thoughts and concerns. Are decisions always popular? No. But sometimes you have to make those unpopular decisions. As far as the traffic situation go, I've got a couple of ideas in mind that maybe I'm going to toss out and see what happens, especially with the Blackhawk situation. We talk about we have, we have stop signs all the way up and down the streets. Thought that kind of came to mind and I'm going to suggest it to them to see what happens and then Monday night then talk about it again. I also have to talk to my public works director whether or not it would be feasible for it to be done. But as a whole, I've never had children in the school district in this town. I've never had children that attend to the park districts meetings in this town. I am a member of the library. I look at a lot of my fellow members, trustee Forsley teaches in 201. Trustee Scott has children that go to 201. Not only do we have to deal with 201, but remember south of 55th Street, we also have to look at situations dealing with the marker school in West Hills. So we're dealing with several different school districts, but 201, your school districts draw families. If you have a school district that is up and coming and has the proper things, then they come. The only way you can do that is to make the improvements and try to keep the revenue stream and diverse it as much as you possibly can across different avenues. Because if, like trustee Scott said, we put all of our eggs in one basket, yes, we're lucky we have foreign car dealerships, but let's say something really drastic happens, then we lose that. As far as the property values of homes go, I can honestly tell you, I think everyone in this village, when you get your new assessment from the county clerk's office, you need to take a very good look at it. I just got mine a month ago. My value of my property has been decreased 12 and 1/2 percent. If I were to have to sell my house right now, I would have to short sell my house. And it has nothing to do with the location where my house is. This is the county that has done this. And I think trustee Forsley can allude to the fact that his is down approximately 7%. So the county, what's happening is home values are coming back to what they actually should have been before they got inflated. Is that going to reflect a reduction in our real estate taxes? Probably not, because they're going to find a way to equal out the value to where your, your tax rate's going to be the same. But I mean, this is something that's happening throughout all the county, throughout the county of DuPage. But as a whole, a decrease of value of the property, I, I don't think that it would do that. I think in the long run, if we can make some of the improvements that we've talked about, I think the values will go up. I just, I feel that it's, it's a good project. I feel that they've come in and I've, in, in the construction business, I can say the same thing that Commissioner Anton said, sitting in his seat. I've dealt with a lot of builders in my life and I have never, ever seen a builder even consider some of the things that these guys are considering. A lot of them would have said, oh, well, that's our best shot, we're out of here. I don't get that feeling from these guys. I, I still feel that there's things that can be done as we go along. I think it's, could still be a work in progress if this is passed. I don't think it's a dead issue with the concerns, I really don't. I don't think they look at it that way, but...
Before, before we take the exit off of memory lane, I have a question for trustee Scott. Did you live in Oakwood when the car dealerships went in and there was all the turmoil in Oakwood? And you live right on the main drag. Can you just talk a little bit about how that might have impacted you and your house and your family?
Well, we were there for the car dealerships and we were there with Citadel on the Pond. Citadel on the Pond was the unique one because it's, the elevation is 10 feet higher than my property was. So I looked out my second story bedroom window and there was a street there. So we were worried about drainage, number one. Streetlights going into my bedroom, number two, and my daughter's because of a 10-foot elevation. As crazy as it sounds, it went through, there were no issues with the, the drainage because fortunately enough, they made sure with pipes that were big enough to go into the lake, so in the Lake Charles. But it was a disaster which everybody thought in the beginning, especially me, because I was the one that was the most affected by it with the highest elevation. And I came and I had the mayor at that time come out and the guy from the public works and everybody else come out to my house. And I was not a happy camper at all. With that being said, we stayed there, the property was developed. And with that, my house did not go down and I sold it within a week, when I decided to move to another location in Oakwood for a bigger house because our family was expanding. That house had a slab and I couldn't do anything with a basement. And I already put one addition on it. That was the other thing, we put an addition on it despite that. Then we had the dealership come in and that was another issue with Bob Roerman. There was all sorts of things that were going to be there that was, you know, the whole area had been 22 acres of vacant land which the kids were playing in, in an old swamp and slough that was there. So they came in and again, I was at the village board meetings voicing my opinion of what it was going to look like and how it was going to devalue our property and the big, giant inflatable gorilla with the pink bikini on. And that's how people would be able to know how to get to my house because they just turn right or left at that, that sonny.
At that gorilla.
Again, all I have seen, and I can tell you just personally, is that up until recent times, because of the economic situation, our property values have just gone up over there, despite having a dealership there. Despite having test drives which go down Oakwood Drive, you know, you try to discourage it, but it happens. You can't prevent it because you can't have a cop there all the time. Oakwood Drive still has the school buses coming down it, supply trucks that come down into the school. It hasn't affected us one bit. Huh? Absolutely. And, but I'm going to tell you what happens in the wintertime. Even when we, and not everybody does this, okay? Because not everybody does it in town. Not everybody shovels. You've got the thinking that if I shovel it and somebody slips, I'm going to get sued, which isn't true. You've got other people who say, I'm just too lazy to do it and I don't want to do it. Or you have seniors who aren't capable of doing it. I can't tell you the amount of times, and we have a newsletter in the Oakwood that goes out to every house and I write it, and in every winter I have to sit there and say, please shovel your sidewalks because these kids are walking in the street with all the traffic of the teachers and all the students, the 500 kids that are going there, the buses, there's kids that'll walk in that street. And they can go by a half a block of sidewalk that's been cleaned and will just continue to go in the street anyhow. And you've got other kids that are really good about it and they'll walk in the sidewalk and trudge through the snow.
But we don't have to, you know, drive to see the students.
Well, and that's what I think trustee...
But it's three years down the road, isn't there some thinking that they're already digging into Richmond already, right there?
No, 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 I don't think we're talking about the, from the, from the building to Trobe. We're trying to, we're trying to expand it to, or at least talk about doing something from Trobe down to Chicago Avenue.
And I'm all for that.
All the way down.
But in the immediate...
Which they're taking into consideration, but they've got to look at the cost. You know, it's better, honestly, they're looking into it. I think if they're smart, they do it, but that's up to them, okay? And then we can take it, the village can take it from the next step after that. And then really, the kids aren't walking in the, in the street anymore. And all you have to worry about at that point is getting your neighbors to shovel the sidewalks so when they do go to school, that they're not in the streets.
As we all talk about our experiences, I think that's how a lot of the decisions are made from our past experiences. Trustee Emery gave hers, you can, we've each given, and I just live down the street, so I get the, the train traffic. So we all have our, our past experiences. The traffic is, is a concern no matter where we're at. And when I was over at, at the site, I recalled Harvey's being there. Harvey's was a very popular restaurant, very busy. And I thought, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I always came off onto Richmond and turned right. And I don't know that there was an exit on Ogden.
There was.
So this is kinda similar to what it was a while ago. Now, it hasn't been there for a long time. The concern I had with, the gentleman made with driving on Ogden, again, you pull from your experiences. I got hit, hit on Ogden making a left-hand turn from the car X. So you, you know, you pull from those experiences and you, and the last time something came up, I was asking, can we, you know, restrict that left-hand turn? You can't control everything, but what we can do is look at it and, and review it. And I think traffic is, is a concern. I think the sidewalks are a good idea. I think the, the Carish has brought up the, what do you call the monitor?
The digital speed.
Yeah. I never thought of that. I thought that was a good suggestion, of course. And they said they'd look, again, the cost, we don't know what the cost is on those. But I think we need to continue to monitor, to monitor the traffic and see how things are gonna go. In the years that I've been on the board, I would agree with all the trustees here, we've never had a developer do all that they have done. And you've agreed to that and you've, and, and the residents, I, I would have to thank you also for being so good and seeing that and appreciate that you see the care that they're trying to put into it. I know it's not the best answer for some of you that live so close, but you do see how much they're, they're trying to work with us. And so, yes, I'm in favor of the project, but I, I agree that we need to look at the traffic. Trustee Fleming has some ideas. We look at the sidewalk. I think it's not a, if, if it passes, it's not a, it passes, we're done, forget about it and you're, you're history. I think trustee Scott brought up the fact that after it passed, you come in and, you know, here's the issue, is there a way to address it and see how that goes? So, yes, I'm, I'm in favor, but, but yes, we need, we still need to work with it.
Okay. You're looking at me. I agree with the rest of the board. I, I think the project is great. I thank everybody for their emails. I watched all the meetings. And this last one, it took like three different sittings for me to be able to finish the meeting because of my activities being so busy right now, but I listened to every of them and I tried and rattled my brain trying to figure out. I have worked in a different area, but in the construction field and took construction courses, so I was trying to go back and figure out what we could do for the residents. I, I would not approve no left or no right turns because as, as they had, I found out, I even thought about it before I even listened to the meetings, I'm going, it's not gonna work. In my head, I'm trying to visualize this. I even tried to die and I'm looking at the village map, I'm going, it's, it's not gonna work. You're still gonna have those people come up Blackhawk. And even if you block them and force them onto Ogden, which is fine, they're still gonna come back and come back Richmond because you're forcing them around in the circle. You're not just forcing them, you're forcing your neighbors. Don't forget, the guy that lives a half and a block, you know, a block and a half down is gonna have to do the same thing. He's not gonna be allowed to make that left turn to go home. It's one of the things, everybody thinks it's great when they have that sign out there saying, no left turn during a certain busy hour because they don't want all that cut through traffic. But the residents forget, that includes them. And they have to go around to get back to their homes and stuff and they will get ticketed like anybody else. Now, coming, and, and these people coming and turning left when we say no left turn, I don't know if a cop can even ticket for that because they're coming off of a private area. But the fact is, it is an inconvenience even for your own neighbors, but it's, I don't see it stopping the traffic. I, I, the first concern I had was moving it back, you will not like those trucks and the beeping noise, because I'm by the village garage. So like we said, we all have our story. We've learned to be very good neighbors with the village garage. We've been in our house for 36 years and that garage has expanded tremendously, probably four times, if not 10 times more trucks and stuff. But they've been very good neighbors. In fact, they keep talking about a new public works building and we're going, no, we don't want you to move out of our neighborhood. We've enjoyed them. They, you know, they do good, they try to be quiet. And I think this is how this business is gonna be. They're gonna try to be good neighbors. They want your business, so they're gonna do their best to be a good neighbor and, and, you know, and if they're not, they know, you know, the board will be coming and talking to them and saying, how can we resolve this problem? They need a masonry waiver they need for, you know, to get us through. They'll need a liquor license and things. And they just can't sell beer and wine, they have to go through the mayor and get the liquor license and stuff. So there will be monitoring when people are worried about drinking. There's, they're monitored, just like any business that sells liquor. They'll be, they'll have their stings in there, the cops will go in there periodically to do a sting to make sure they're not selling to underage. There's all sorts of things, once they have that license, that the cops will be able to do. So it, it's a different store. I'm not certain, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think on the video, there was one young lady who worked at the Jewel and I'm, I am a Jewel person, so I don't know if they're gonna get me away from the Jewel, but they might get me there for some of their produce. I'm very interested in their dinners and, and their menus, that sounded interesting for me. So I'll, I'll probably periodically go in and check it out, but to pull me away from a store I've been going to for 35 years, I doubt if I'll do a lot of shopping there. But I do think a lot of people who do, I, I've never been in Whole Foods. I've never been to the grocery store on Chicago Avenue.
Nature's Best.
Nature's Best. I never go there, doesn't interest me. I can get what I want at Joel's or Sam's Club and that's where I go. I know where things are. But some people will. But you're not gonna get everybody just because they opened up, so. I, I'd like them to work with it, I'd like them to really think hard, I love that idea with that, that speed monitor myself. I think that'd go. When you talked about speed bumps or humps, we outruled them a long time ago on the board. The fire department hates them because if you have a back injury and they gotta get that ambulance over there, that cuts down their speed, they can't just go over it like themselves. The plows don't have too much trouble, it'd be more of the maintenance, the village maintenance on them because of the plowing would deter them, but we still, they are still take a toll on stuff. I don't think you'd like it and you'd find the kids will be skateboarding on them more than, than the cars will slow it down. So we've talked about all these issues before on trying to monitor, we've talked about the traffic circles and that doesn't work, you have to have a tremendous amount of property, so a lot of people on the corners will lose tremendous property. It's really nice in some towns, but they have to be built that way when they're done, when they become a subdivision, they gotta put their stuff in there. It's very difficult to take an established neighborhood and do things like that in there. So what we can do is just try to see what we're doing and, and work with you and listen to your emails and, and voice messages when you call us and see if we can't. A lot of times you'll see where it's very, people don't understand, we'll, we'll get an email, they'll complain about something and you may all of a sudden get an email back from the chief of police or from, from the village manager or something because we forward that on to them and say, hey, this person has a problem, what can we do? And they will reply to you personally. So we do forward on your emails if, if we can direct it to the right department, too. But we'll do what we can to, to work with the neighborhood. It's gotta be a lot better. I also met your coyote when I was out there, because I sat there, a couple of those traffic counts was me driving, probably about over a dozen times around there. I went all the way down to the light, went through Oakwood and came back. I wanted to see the, how Claret Hills was gonna affect this. I came back the other way, went down, went back and forth. I think the coyote got tired of sanding me. But I kept, every time I went over one of those things, I'm like, darn, maybe I should be counting how many times I did it so he can subtract it, you know? But, you know, it, it's something, I'm glad we're doing the studies. And please keep us informed if this goes through, you know, but I, I am kinda forward on it because I think it's a beautiful project. And I, I'm willing to give it a shot if the rest of the board is, so.
I think I've heard about every possible effect that this could have on our community, both positive and, and negative. I think it's an excellent project. I don't think, agreeing with some of the other trustees that have been on the board a while, that we've never seen a developer come in and make as many concessions in trying to work with residents as this company has. It's not perfect, but when you come, whenever you come in with a new project like this, there are always going to be problems. Almost everybody that I've heard speak in this room is in favor of this project. But the one thing that I keep hearing that we need to devote more attention to with, with signage and, and stop signs or whatever, is to try to come up with a way to control traffic. As has been indicated, this board has always been very responsive to residential areas when we have traffic problems and trying to control those problems. It's not, it's not a situation where we're going to have an immediate plan to control all of the traffic, but if it turns out to be worse and according to what the, twice as bad as what the traffic counts indicate, then we will work with the owners and I'm sure we'll come to a solution to help solve those traffic problems. In terms of storm water control, this is a wonderful project. You've taken seven parcels and put them all together in storm water management and has also been indicated, that's a tremendous amount of water that's gonna be retained to keep it out of the surrounding areas and, and let it go at a very, release it at a very slow rate. I mean, every, almost every situation that they've been faced with, they've tried to come up with some solution for the residents. We've never seen that, we've never seen that before, to the extent that they're willing to go. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful project, I'm in favor of it, but I, I think we need to just sharpen our pencils a little bit more in terms of controlling the traffic, which may be a problem and may not be a problem, we don't know. We're trying to put as many controls on it now, but if it turns out to be worse than we anticipated, then this board, I'm sure, and their willingness to respond to the residents, will do whatever it takes to control, control that traffic. Any other final comments on this item?
I just have a comment. Some of the conditions that have been discussed need to be placed in writing in the ordinance, so there's some enforceability to it. Some, some I think are simple, some may need a little work. One of the conditions would be that the landscaping, there's robust landscaping, the landscaping would have to be continually maintained and replaced as necessary. If a tree dies, we expect you guys, not if it's a mature tree, replace it with a mature tree, but at least replace it. It was mentioned at the public hearing that the pole lighting is going to be shielded downwards. You're actually gonna, if, if they're not engineered that way, you're gonna make sure there's, there's shields on them. Deliveries are restricted to no more than 30-foot-long box trucks. Do you need an exception for the occasional semi?
Yes.
Okay. But the vast majority will be by the, by the box trucks?
It would be, it would be vendors that are, our trucks that are delivering to the store will all be 30-foot trucks. Most of our vendors will require 30-foot trucks, but not every vendor will have that, but it will be the extreme exception.
We'd like, whenever possible, to, to limit the time of deliveries, particularly when you bought a residential neighborhood. Your hours close, when you're open to the public at nine o'clock at night. You indicated that deliveries would occur predominantly in the early morning hours, so I'd like to restrict deliveries, if this is acceptable, from 9:00 PM until...
4:00.
4:00 AM?
Keep in mind, I think they are quite a ways away, it means that they're off Ogden. I mean, we could say if it's before a certain hour that they could leave on Ogden. You follow, saying they could turn around and...
There was talk that leaving on Ogden would be great, if, if they can do that.
The 30-foot trucks will be able to do a three-point turn, but because we're making that now, that entrance...
That's what we're saying is, let's say that somebody wanted to come in at three in the morning.
Right.
Right. If it was outside a certain hour, that they could come in off Ogden and they have to leave off the box.
The problem is, is the beeping when the trucks have to back up from that loading dock and at three in the morning, no one wants to hear. So that's why we'd like to put in a time restriction. I imagine if it happens once or twice where it's off those hours, no one's gonna go crazy. If it starts happening every night, you're gonna start hearing it. And the village will enforce that, you know, will, will let you know.
John, and likewise, that if there's a, if we end up putting a restriction on delivery hours, that means the semis can't, semis and box trucks can't pull in and idle while they're waiting for the delivery time.
Yeah, good point.
Learn from the Lowe's experience. Signage restricting delivery trucks turning left only on, on to Richmond. A few things just about good faith investigation. I, I don't think the village can legally bind the developer, but they stated they would investigate in good faith sidewalk installation along Richmond Avenue to Trobe. That's about as strong as you can get with the language. They're gonna investigate in good faith installation of speed warning devices, like flashing, where's your speed limit? It's about as much as you can do, otherwise it could be considered an illegal exaction to...
Maybe our police department could help them with that because they've already got one or two.
There's the property at 514 Blackhawk, the developer's offered to install landscaping and/or...
Three-point.
A three-point turn through some paper bricks or something. That's gonna be up to the homeowner to accept or reject. Their plan's drawn already. So install per plans, if the homeowner accepts, buy and will have to insert a reasonable date. I don't know what your timing is, but you obviously wanna coordinate it with your construction so it's cost efficient. You know...
You should include the house next door.
We've got the pools as well at 512.
512 and 514, okay. And, you know, if they accept by June 1st, that's not, you're still gonna have your guy, landscaping's gonna be later, so that's, that's fine. That gives homeowners some time to think if it's, if that's something they really want or not. I think that's all I had.
Anything else? Thank you. Thank you all for coming in this evening. Next item. Massage establishment fees. Board to consider an amendment to Article 17, Massage Establishments, Section 22-1432 of the Westmont Quote of Ordinances to reflect massage establishment license fees as non-refundable.
As, as the mayor stated, this was an item submitted by the village clerk's office to clarify a practice that they've had when a massage establishment license application has been made and it's been withdrawn, we have not refunded those fees. And the recommendation and consultation with the village attorney is that we ought to have that codified in the ordinance, so we're suggesting that that language be added as non-refundable fee.
Anything else, Ren? Any other comments on that item? Moving right along. Proposed aggregate property tax levy. Board to consider motion determining the proposed aggregate tax levy.
In your packet is a set of material regarding preparation for the truth and taxation public hearing, which is scheduled for December 2nd. Statutorily, we're required to prepare the aggregate tax levy and publicly make a determination of that aggregate tax levy. At the November 1st Administration Finance Committee meeting, the committee indicated an interest in approving a levy for $7,440,000, 440,000, 112 thou... $440,000, 112 dollars. This includes $3,950,000 for the village operating funds, $1,663,962 for the police pension, and $1,826,150 for the library. Our budget analyst, Spencer Parker's here if there's any questions. And we have in the packet as well, I believe, we passed out a schedule, if that was passed out, correct, regarding the tax levy process.
And for the residents, there will be a public hearing on December 2nd...
Correct.
...on this, so that'll be a time for, for comment.
Yes, you should have in your packet something, got the blue stripes, this item right here that goes over the timeline. And again, since this has been discussed heavily at multiple Administration Finance Committee meetings, I'm not gonna go into too much detail. But as you can see from the timeline, this is where the board simply determines the aggregate levy that's going to be published in the paper. And then after it's published in the paper, there'll be a public hearing and then the ordinance will be adopted officially. So this is just the first step. So this is just the first step in that process. Is there any additional questions?
Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
Next item, honorary designation policy. Board to conserve policy identifying procedure for approving honorary designation for village-owned streets.
Mayor, the, this, this policy was inspired by, well, you know, recent frequency of requests for honorary designations. There are currently three honorary designated roads now. Two of them came kind of in quick succession, and there's another one that has been, I don't want to say informally, but has been requested that we be considered. And we reviewed the request at the Public Works Committee and came to the conclusion, as a committee, that it was probably worthy of having a formal policy describing the terms of where it's applicable and the, you know, the provisions and, and criteria for approving it or before it becomes to the village board. So we've reviewed this at more than one Public Works Committee, and there are a lot of thoughts on it, but we, we determined that it was time to, you know, bring it to the board as a whole to see what their, you know, direction might be in formulating this policy. The sample policy before you is a, is a pretty direct copy of an example, I forget what community. Schaumburg, Schaumburg uses currently, and I put it in there as, as a model. Some of the, the, the features of it, besides describing the terms, the terms being what types of persons or entities would be eligible to even be considered for an honorary designation. And then moving on into the criteria section, where these designations should be. It involves public buy-in or, or is one component that the, the, the location that's selected has got a significance to that person, too. And so these types of items are in here. And it's complete as it is, but, you know, we're looking for input on it, too. I realize for some of you, this is the first time you've seen it, and I don't know how much discussion you want to, you know, do with it tonight. There, there is no urgency in approving this. It's just that there is one pending request out there now that has kind of not been acted on until we decide what we want to do with this. I guess if there's any questions, you know, how we got to this point.
The policy doesn't address time. For example, maybe during the 75th anniversary of Westmont, we might have done an honorary road, but it would have only been for a period of six months or something like that. Is that something we want to consider?
Yeah, we actually, we actually talked about that that would be something we want to give consideration.
Because it's not in here. I don't see it in here, so.
This is just, this is just a rough draft or something to look at.
Well, that's something I'd like, I think, maybe we'd want to consider.
And I, I spoke very strongly on that. We need to put a time period on something like that.
You know, some might be forever and ever.
Right.
You know?
When you read the criteria and for the, for the use of the person that's making the request, that is not spelled out here because it says, you know, significance of the person and the significance of the location, and these, those would all be tuned to more permanent designations. There is a, a provision in here, a special provision, that says the village Westmont honorary designation shall be exempt from the requirements of the policy, meaning that if you are declaring and it is your, your designation that you're bringing forward to vote on, it, it's not subject to this buy-in or the requirement. So if you were going to do that, that's, on a case-by-case basis, you could do the, you know, the temporary or the, or the time limit.
Gotcha.
I don't know if you would want to put a time limit in a policy if someone was naming, you know, next to, whether it's the school or the, you know, that would, that would kind of be more permanent in nature. So, I mean, that's one option.
Yeah, that could work.
Particularly, you know, right downtown, and the Cass Avenue is a desirable, you know, location, so.
Yeah, we can't have nine honorings on Cass Avenue, you know?
Sure, right. Alternate.
Are there any other points that need to be considered before this is, comes before us on Monday? Other than that change?
So the one change is that the village shall have the right to determine an appropriate time limit for the honorary street designation. It could be perpetual, or it could be six months.
And maybe in the special provision, the same section I referred to would be a good place to add an additional sentence that the village board can, you know, impose that.
Sorry, where?
It's the...
Special provisions.
Special provisions.
Bottom of the, bottom of the first page.
Got it.
Steve, you said there's three, but it says here there've been subsequent requests before public works. Like, how many?
There's one right now.
Oh, okay. So it's not like everybody and their brother wants an honorary?
No, but, no, not currently, but when they see it being done, it kind of inspires other requests, so.
Why, you have Emory Way in mind?
No, Finn and Sylvia. Finn and Sylvia Court or something. No, I was just curious because, you know, I know Napleton and, where are the other two? Muddy Waters or? Yeah.
Muddy Waters.
Becker. Muddy Waters, the Porsche. Or, yeah, the Porsche. Napleton.
And that was a private street, but it was a, a named private street, and it was, still was village board action to designate it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Does this change for the people who live on the street that, is it a?
No.
Do they need, it's not going to be a post office change? How are they going to do it so they don't have to change their checks and stuff?
It is a, it is an honorary designation and it's a supplemental name, so it does not affect the...
Doesn't change the address.
It doesn't affect the, the primary naming of the street. That would be a, you know, a separate action on your part to physically change the name of the street.
Like what we have right now is Muddy Waters Way on Cass Avenue. It hasn't changed any of...
Yeah, I just want to make sure the people understand that, so they're not worried that we're going to put an honorary's name on there and now they got to change all their stuff.
If you send it to two south Muddy Waters Way, it would never get there.
Right.
Anything further?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, proclamation. Board to consider proclamation recognizing September 2010 as American Indian Heritage Month. I would like to dispense with reading that proclamation this evening because of the lateness of the hour and instead read the proclamation at our board meeting on Monday evening. Next item, Finance Ordinance Number 14.
Waive the reading.
Quest to waive the reading. Purchase orders. Questions on purchase orders. Hearing none. Moving right along. The manager tells me that there is no request this evening for an executive session. So we appreciate that, and unless there's something else to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to go home.
Second, Emory.
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Klebina.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Forsley.
Yes.
Trustee Emory.
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, or whatever.
This, this meeting is adjourned.